Are they calling an angel?
Oh.
So it's called the calling an angel, looks like.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at, I've got 7:07. Yeah. First thing is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic which stands one nation, united all, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll open the floor for any citizens' comments.
No, please, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. Good evening. As most of you know, Janice Bartrand, 28 Perkins Street in Wenham. For the last six years, it has been my privilege to serve on this board, and I am honored to have been elected twice by the towns of both Hamilton and Wenham. I'd like to take a moment to thank several people individually. Deb Evans, Roger Kubel, Sheila McDonald, who were all very welcoming to me when I was first elected. I would like to thank both Mike and Jeff, neither of whom has ever dismissed me or dismissed my comments because of my age, and for that, I am truly grateful. I would like to thank Donna Bunk, who has been enormously helpful to me in the six years I've been here. Before I go, I would like to say, I am very sad to be seeing Dr. Harvey leaving the school district. And I urge the school committee to take a minute to reflect on why he is leaving. He has done an amazing job taking this runaway train and putting it back on the tracks and going in the right direction. We have instituted a one-to-one iPad program. We are rebuilding our curriculum. He has rehired an entirely new leadership team. And he leaves very massive shoes to be filled. It is my opinion that the school committee has backtracked over the last years as certain members have gone out of their way to make the superintendent feel unappreciated or unwanted. Or as he is hiding information from the school district. I believe this to be massively untrue. I am saddened by the personal agendas that are currently being played out on the school committee. Elected officials should not behave this way. Adults should not behave this way. I believe that the chairman, whilst a good man, has been far too nice in letting the OML violations and school committee protocol violations slide in hopes, and hope that with a successful reelection bid, he will be firmer in the future. Although the district has accomplished a great deal over the last several years, we seem to be falling back into old habits. The school committee is not a place to count the colored pencils or to worry about bus stop placements. The school committee is a place to talk about ideals and set a vision of where we want to be. You cannot be looking forward if you are in the weeds. So it is my sincerest hope that the school committee keep itself out of the weeds and looking forward and keep itself on a track forward. I wish you all the very best, and I thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Good evening, Scott Mattern, Hamilton. I'm here on behalf of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen. Thank you for listening to me. This is a shout-out to ask for people to apply for a new committee that the town of Hamilton and the Board of Selectmen has created called the Capital Committee. Capital Committee, excuse me. And I'll give you just one quick statement about why this even exists, and then just a tad of background. So I'm kind of asking you to help network around and try to find folks or people watching or here tonight consider applying. So the purpose of this new committee is to help the town to understand and consider the relative need, timing, and cost of capital expenditures, and the effect capital expenditures may have on the financial condition of the town. The town has a lot of capital expenditures coming that we're aware of. The Town Hall is currently under a design process. We have many more water needs and road needs. The Patton Homestead, which is a gift we received from the Patton family a few years ago, that needs help. And we're probably looking forward to capital needs from the school committee as well. So this is a group that's really chartered to help the town manager build the capital budget and look out over five years, the first year of which becomes the operating budget in the actual approved budget for the next fiscal year. So we're going to have a committee of five people. I'm on it already, appointed to it, but there's four more openings. And we'd like to get people who have a lot of knowledge of the town. They don't have to have one specific thing, but certainly anybody who has good understanding of the school and its needs and operations and how it affects capital needs is really, really welcome. Folks who probably have some experience with maybe relatively large projects, you know, multimillion-dollar things. But these are all ideals that we're looking for. And also someone who might have some background with the overall cadence of the fiscal planning and the town meeting decisions that happen in Hamilton. Our town meeting times, twice a year, the preparation of all that, the fiscal planning that goes into it. So someone doesn't have to be a financial expert to do this. That can come from a lot of different skills. So that was why I was here, is doing a shout-out to see if we can find some more volunteers to apply for this position. And we're hoping to complete the appointments at the beginning of April. So, thank you for the time.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, so moving on to the chair's report. The only thing I have tonight is I just want to actually wish Janice von Farewell, you know, thank her for actually serving our community for six years so diligently. It's really, this job isn't easy, and it's not always a pleasant place to be. And to actually step up and do the work that she's done at her age is pretty remarkable. And to do that, to win two, not one, but two elections and actually serve this community the way she has is quite commendable. And I really want to thank her for that and just wish her the best in all her future endeavors. All right, Mike?
All right. Okay. More than a couple of announcements tonight. So first off, we want to congratulate our North Shore National History Day winners. So from Social Studies Curriculum Leader Kristen Borges, we hear that on Sunday, March 3rd, Hamilton Wenham Regional High School students competed against six other Massachusetts high schools in the North Shore National History Day competition. The theme for this year was triumph and tragedy in history. And all of our first, second, and third place winners will represent Hamilton Wenham at the Massachusetts History Day State Competition, which will be on Saturday, April 6th, at Winchester High School. A special thank you to the teachers who worked closely with our students since September on their research projects. Kristen Borges, Brett Burnett, Vinnie Bucci, and Johann Knatz. In addition, a huge thank you to Ann Page and her AP US History class for volunteering their time to help make the day's events go smoothly. Just kind of read through the winners. An individual exhibit, Adalene Gordon took a third place. For group exhibit, Rosie Safford, Addie Flanagan, and Madeline Rustad took second place. An individual website, Nora Sullivan Horner took first place. And Megan Nmero received an honorable mention. And in group website, Ava Halsted, Lily Johnson, and Sarah Travers took a third place. So congratulations to all those and good luck at the states. We also had a busy weekend for DECA. We were going to wind up with 17 students that qualified for the national conference this year. So that was, the state conference was on Saturday, March 9th. It was the 60th Annual Massachusetts DECA State Career Development Conference at the Heinz Convention Center in Boston. And as I said, 17 students qualified for the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida. Eighty-two Hamilton Wenham students joined over 3,000 students, advisors, and business professionals attending the conference, where students compete in over 50 categories of marketing, hospitality, finance, and entrepreneurship topics. Hamilton Wenham obviously took home plenty of hardware this year. Nine trophies for anywhere from first to fifth place. And that was, that's what you needed to qualify for the international conference. And seven top-10 plaques, six medallions for first to third place in an event. And so we want to congratulate all of our high school DECA members who participated in the state conference. This list is pretty long.
Yeah, but including Lauren Verge.
Yes, Lauren Verge is on it. So just for the full list, it'll be posted on my blog, and it's actually on Eric Tracy's blog as well. But congratulations to all of, everybody who took part in this event. It's a pretty big deal. Couple of events coming on, make sure everybody knows about. Tomorrow night, March 14th, the Hamilton Wenham League of Women Voters will present their fourth annual Civics B at the Miles River at 7:00. And for information and to sign up or to participate, And looking forward to that event tomorrow night. Kindergarten orientation and registration is also coming up. That's kindergarten information night will be held next Monday, March 18th, at 6:30, right here in the Buker School Multipurpose Room. And then registration for kindergarten will be held at the district offices on Monday, April 1st through Friday, April 5th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. And then additionally, we're going to take registrations from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, April 6th. All the registration information and the required forms are available right on the front page of the district website, hwschools.net. And then finally, we have a program on vaping that's going to happen at the high school. It's called "The New Look of Nicotine Addiction: Vaping and E-Cigarettes Discussion for Parents." Will be presented on April 2nd in the high school library, middle school, high school library at 7:00 p.m. The program will also feature Hidden in Plain Sight with the Hamilton Police Department. And Hidden in Plain Sight is a mock-up of a teenager's bedroom for parents to see all the different ways that their teenagers can hide things in their rooms. And that's kind of an open walk set that you can walk through. The doors will open for that Hidden in Plain Sight program at 5:30. And that's my report for the week.
All right. I was just saying, I don't even open my teenager's door.
Did, you want to, I mean, I know it's not a school district event, but the Ed Fund is having an event on the 23rd?
20th. I don't have any info on it, but...
Oh, well, you have to go. It's in your town. It's going to be at the north, what is it, North Ale there behind the...
Ping pong event.
True North. It's on the 23rd. It's a ping pong tournament on the 23rd.
All right. Up next is Consent Agenda. Do you want to pull anything?
Can we just pull out the one that says eight minutes? Because they never got put in the drop box or...
There's no minutes.
There were no minutes to be read.
There are no minutes to approve.
No, there was some that I gave to Donna, but she forgot to put them in the drop box and post them on the agenda.
There aren't any minutes.
No, that's what I'm saying. Can we just pull, like, I guess, I just want to say that...
You're just going to approve the warrants, basically.
Yes.
The report. We're approving the report.
The warrant report.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve the consent agenda without minutes for warrants on February 27th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, that's unanimous. All right. First up on new business, we are going to have Peggy McElany to talk to us about the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Program. Welcome back, Peggy.
It's got a computer. I don't know. I'm watching.
It was working.
Always the technology.
Yeah. She just, she just might be recognizing...
She just had her working.
Do you know what it is?
Christine, it should be computer one.
No, but it says off.
Isn't it the dongle?
She had it working.
This is every PowerPoint I gave in grad school. This is every single PowerPoint I gave in grad school.
Murphy's Law, right?
Well, it used to be you had to bring everything on a disk because you hadn't used a computer.
As long as it's still, and you got to touch the pad or something.
I do that hall every time I want to get a phone call.
I'm not. I'm pretending I'm an astronaut orbiting Earth. We're good to go now.
There we go.
Sorry about that, little technical difficulty. So thank you for having us here this evening. Thank you. So my name is Peggy McElany, Director of Curriculum for the District. And I have here with me this evening Christine Faschera, who is our elementary math coordinator, and Jen Soriel, who is our secondary math curriculum leader. So the bulk of our agenda this evening will actually be about the new math curriculum resources we have in the district, but I just wanted to give you a couple of updates in advance. There are many, many things going on with curriculum and instruction in the district. And we just wanted to highlight three of the main priorities that we've had this year. So the first one I wanted to speak about is social-emotional learning. This has been a major movement in education to realize that schools can't just be about academics, that we really need to be thinking about how we educate the whole child. And that there's lots of research out there now that shows that social-emotional skills are actually the access point that allows students to be academically successful and frankly, be successful in life. So that's something that we've really been trying to emphasize within our schools, and that has been a major focus of professional development this year within the district. The next thing that we've been working on at the secondary level is referred to as inclusive practices. And that's something that is a priority right now for the Department of Education. In fact, it's now a recertification requirement for all state teachers in the state that every five years, they need to get 15 PDPs in inclusive practices. And the idea behind that is that there are research-based instructional strategies that teachers can use in the classroom that allow all students to access the learning. And that those strategies, while perhaps originally designed for students who are perhaps in special education, are actually strategies that are good for all students. And if teachers are aware of those, and if they implement those strategies in the classroom, it really just helps everyone to improve their academic performance. So we've been talking about what some of those strategies are and how those could be implemented consistently, 6-12. And that was actually the focus of our Fall PD Day and also our PD Day this past Monday as well. And then finally, we'll be talking about the new K-8 math resources. So as you know, through the community support, we were able to purchase all new math resources this year, 4K to 8. And we'll go into more depth about what those are. They are not the same program, K to 5 and to 6 to 8, because when we looked at the various options that were out there, there really wasn't one product that was K to 8 that was particularly high quality. So we really looked at two different programs. We've adopted Investigations 3 in K to 5 and the illustrative math curriculum, which currently is being published by Open Up Resources, but they are changing their publisher, or at least they're a certified publisher. But it's still going to be the same curriculum going forward. It's an open resource curriculum, which is why the publishers might change, but it doesn't change the actual curriculum. So the reality is that those are the two that we're working together. And while they are not the same publisher, they are not the same product, they are very closely aligned philosophically and complement each other well. So we feel like the resources that we were able to adopt really do provide a seamless math education for our students in grades K through 8. So that's the focus for this evening. So in terms of social-emotional learning, one of the things that we've been working on is refreshing our training on what's known as responsive classroom. So that is a whole-school approach that is really about supporting students' development of social-emotional skills. And it actually also teaches them about academic skills as well. So we ended up having, this is something that's been in the district for a very long time, but we hadn't trained teachers in about a decade. And as a result, all of those new hires over the years, they've sort of heard about responsive classroom or they've had some informal exposure to the idea, particularly of morning meeting, which is really something that happens in all of our elementary classrooms, but hadn't been through the full training. And we felt that this was important and that we should be training them. So this past November and December, we actually trained 24 of our teachers to make sure that we were really trained across the district at the elementary level. So that included both classroom teachers and special educators who work with students. The idea behind responsive, behind responsive classroom is there, it's a way of sort of, they're teaching practices, but it's a way of providing consistency in the student's day and really teaching them what you are expecting them to do. So if you are, it can be behavioral, like if you need students to be able to line up for recess, you shouldn't just assume that they know how to do that. You should actually be teaching them how to do that. And same thing with academics. If you want students to be able to take notes in a particular way or perform an academic skill in a particular way, you need to be explicit and do something known as interactive modeling to help them to know how to do that. So I'm going to show you a very brief video. Hopefully, we won't have any more technical difficulties, but just to kind of show you what responsive classroom is all about.
My mom, when videos never work.
It's not going to work.
And joyful learning environment. Every child deserves a warm, safe, and joyful learning environment. A place that supports them to take risks, to learn, and reach their full potential. That's the core principle of responsive classroom, which is now used in classrooms and schools across the country. Responsive classroom is not a separate curriculum. Instead, it's an approach to teaching. It offers educators practices that they can use throughout the day to expand children's learning and create positive communities, both in the classroom and throughout the school. Responsive classroom techniques don't end at the classroom door. They can be used to build a positive school culture as well. Two major studies concluded that the responsive classroom approach increases student engagement, improves academic achievement, decreases discipline problems, and leads to more high-quality teaching. Responsive classroom has helped me become a better teacher. I think it's totally changed my approach to how I interact with them. I noticed a change in my effectiveness as a teacher for the morning meeting and the responsive classroom as a whole.
My favorite thing about responsive classroom is that it works. I've seen it work as a classroom teacher. I've also seen it work as a building principal.
Everyone is invested in what we're doing for kids, and that's the power of school-wide responsive classroom.
Okay, so you can kind of get a feel for what that's all about. But what that looks like in our day is that every morning, um, students meet usually on the rug in their classrooms, and they have a morning meeting in which they greet each other. And there's usually, um, sort of a morning message that gives students a grounding in what they're going to be focused on that day, kind of the agenda for the day. But the whole point of it is to really to build community. So, you'll have, um, students greeting each other, they may do some activities in which they're learning to collaborate and to cooperate with one another. Um, it's really kind of a fun time in their day, and it helps them to settle into their day, but it's teaching them those skills that then transfer over into the other learning. So, if you want students to be able to work, um, cooperatively in an academic setting, you need them to understand how to work as a community. And it's that morning meeting that really helps to establish that. And then there are just various routines that they do throughout the day, and then there's an end-of-day check-in as well. So, that's something we've really been emphasizing. Morning meeting has been, uh, a standard part of the district for a long time, but the training has really allowed teachers to think more, um, about their objectives for that time and exactly how they might structure it. They learned lots of new strategies for incorporating things into their morning meeting, and also about different strategies that they can use throughout their day. And we got really good feedback from our teachers in terms of the training that we had provided. The package that you need to, um, purchase in order for them to come in does include, just for one school unfortunately, um, an opportunity for the consultant who did our training to come back and to do an evaluation. Um, they usually come back a couple of months after the training to see how things are going and how teachers are implementing those strategies in their classroom. And they come up, they use a tool that allows them then to sort of give us a sense of where is it going well, what might we need to improve. And so, the consultant will be coming back and working with, um, Ben Sherston at Buick to think about what, um, what that looks like at Buick, and to teach him how to use the tool so that he can then sort of conduct, um, other observations later throughout time to make sure that the responsive classroom approach is really being implanted successfully and faithfully within the classroom. Um, we're hoping to also do this for our other two schools, um, but it is a more significant additional cost, so that's just not something that we could do for this year, this was part of our package. We're going to see, is it worthwhile? And if it is, we would be looking to do this for our other schools probably next year. Um, but we just wanted to kind of see what it was about, and if we thought it was, um, a good investment to, to see if the tool works well for us. So, that's what we're gonna be focusing on with responsive classroom. Um, the thing that we're working on at our middle school is called PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. Um, so this is another school-wide approach that is really geared towards promoting a positive school environment, and it ultimately, again, supports the academic learning. So, you really can't have academic learning unless you have kids available for learning, and unless you have, um, a, a positive school culture, you have classrooms where kids are working well together. Those are all the conditions that you need in order to have a good learning environment. So, that's the intention behind this. Um, it, positive, uh, PBIS is really a proactive approach. Um, so it is not sort of waiting for things to go wrong, but figuring out what do you want your school to look like? What are you kind of expecting from students, and creating the behavioral expectations? So, they have a, um, the middle school is in the process right now of developing a matrix for their behavioral expectations of what they want to see, the various types of respectful behaviors that they would want to see in the middle school. Um, and then thinking about what does that look like in all of the different areas? So, what does that look like in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, and defining those expectations? And the idea behind PBIS is that you really communicate those clearly to students, um, and people are rewarded for good behaviors as opposed to punished for bad behaviors. That's kind of like, have, turning, turning what you would normally think of as discipline kind of on its head and really promoting what we want to see rather than what we don't want to see. So, I'm gonna again show you just a quick video that kind of summarizes some of those aspects of PBIS. So, this year, we've had our middle school join, um, the Northeast PBIS Academy, which is based out of Yukon, but they offer regional, um, workshops in our area. So, we're part of a cohort of other school districts that are in sort of the northeast region of Massachusetts. Um, and they are meeting for trainings, um, periodically throughout the school year. This first year is really an intensive year from a training standpoint to really help the team to understand what PBIS is all about. And this, uh, representative team, which includes all grade levels and subjects at the middle school, as well as administrators and counselors, um, is putting together these expectations and talking to the larger staff about it. And, um, in talking to Craig Covey about this, he really feels like this has been going well. They've been having some great conversations. And the idea is to do full implementation of this and sharing out of these ideas with students, uh, in September. So, um, things are progressing nicely. And the part of the cohort is that they'll support us through implementation with some onsite support and consultation as well. And then that third year would be a refinement year, um, and then we would just be continuing implementation beyond that point. Um, the last thing I wanted to speak up about before I turn this over, um, to our math is the inclusive practices training that we're doing at secondary. So, we've been working with Adam Hickey from Landmark Outreach. Um, and originally, we started working with Adam around our language-based program because that is sort of landmark specialty to be thinking about, um, how you work with students who have language-based disabilities. But really, um, what all the teachers in the language-based program were saying is, you know, this is just good teaching. These practices could benefit any students, and this would be a really great training to have more broadly among this, among the faculty. So, we brought him in in our October PD Day, and he really gave everybody kind of an overview of the research behind this and, um, why you would want to be using certain strategies in your classroom, and introduced them to kind of a wide array of strategies. And then we went back to departments, and we talked about, so which of these do we think would be really valuable and things that we would want to emphasize as a school? And we had departments start piloting them and experimenting with these strategies this year. Um, and basically, it came out that there were four that really kind of came to the top as ones that the faculty was really interested in or found that they were, um, finding useful with students and wanted to know more about. And that included two column notes, reverbalization focusing on the Y, and word walls. So, we had Adam come back, um, this past Monday, and he went sort of for a deeper dive into these various strategies. So, he went a little deeper into the research behind all of this in the morning. Um, he exposed teachers to, um, various ways to do these four strategies and think more deeply about those four strategies. And then the afternoon, we got together, um, through various groupings to sort of talk first at, in grade-level bands, about what would these strategies look like in grade six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, eleven? Because students change over time, and you wouldn't use those strategies exactly the same way in all of those grade levels. To think about what is a word, how would you use a word wall? Why would you use a word wall in sixth grade? How would you use it, why would you use it in eleventh or twelfth grade? Um, and so the teachers kind of broke down, thought about all of those strategies, then shared out their ideas at their grade level and added to their thinking. And then we went into this one really large carousel in the library, and everyone had an opportunity to see all of these strategies and what that progression would look like, um, six through twelve. So, then, the idea from here is that we'll go back to departments, people will take this learning, and they'll continue to work on these through the remainder of the year, and we'll come back together one last time and really think about, so what are we willing to commit to for September? What do we want to make sure is happening, say, for all sixth-grade students or all eighth-grade students in our district around these inclusive practices? So, that this is on the ground for all students. So, they're getting it now, but we want it to be much more consistent. So, in the same way that, um, PBIS is for all students, or responsive classroom is for all students, these are for all students. We feel it will have a tremendously positive impact, um, on student learning, to be consistent so that students feel like throughout their day, regardless of their teacher, that things are being approached in a similar way, and that they're getting supported in similar ways. So, that's the idea behind that. And then the last piece, again, is, um, is the K-eight math curriculum. So, I'm going to turn this over to Christine, um, who is gonna introduce Investigations Three.
Thank you. Hi, um, I'm Christine Fashera, I'm the Elementary, um, Math Coordinator. And I wanted to give you a brief glimpse at Investigations Three, um, starting with some of the things we looked at last year with the selection committee, which was, um, twelve teachers and myself. So, we read a book together that was from the NCTM, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. And it talked about kind of best practices for teaching and learning mathematics. And we were looking for a tool that would, um, promote these best practices in our classrooms. So, these are some of the teaching practices from the book. Um, for example, um, build procedural fluency from conceptual understanding, pose purposeful questions. I'll let you read the other ones. Um, we were also thinking really deeply as a team about these standards here, which are called the Standards for Mathematical Practice. Um, the standards apply K-12. Um, and so, we have the content standards for each grade level, but we also have these standards which get into how kids interact with the mathematics and the habits of mind that students will be exhibiting in a math classroom. So, there's eight of them, they're in the colored bands there. Um, and you can see, so students will reason abstractly and quantitatively, construct viable arguments, model with the math, um, use appropriate tools, look for and make use of, um, structure and repeated reasoning. And then there's two kind of vertical ones there that are supposed to be the umbrella, umbrella ones. Um, and if I can read them, and make sense of problems and persevere in problem solving and attend to precision. This is kind of a visual that's been around for a few years that, um, kind of groups these standards in ways that, that makes sense. So, we were looking for, okay, which program out there is really gonna support these habits of mind for our students? And since we're talking about K through eight programs today, I just wanted to throw this visual up there that talks about the math standards themselves and the domains in the standards. So, you know, the content from K-five to six through eight changes, um, based on these domains, and the domains are just how the standards are grouped together. So, for K-five, I'm talking about counting and cardinality standards, that's, um, for kindergarten. Then we have operations and algebraic thinking, um, we have numbers and operations in base ten, which is basically place value. In third grade through fifth grade, we have a really heavy emphasis on fractions now. Um, and then we have, uh, measurement and data and geometry that go across the board. And then you can see that, um, in the middle school level, there's a different focus. So, why did we choose Investigations? Uh, first, the team last year really felt strongly that this was the best fit for our students here in Hamilton Wenham. Um, it was inquiry-based. Uh, we also went to another district to see this in action, um, and we piloted some of these lessons ourselves. So, um, it promotes student agency in a math workshop model, which is really important for us. Um, as I mentioned, the standards of mathematical practice are embedded in it. Um, there's PD offered by the authors themselves, which are from this organization called Turk, based out of Cambridge. And we were lucky enough to have four of the authors actually come in on Monday to run, um, PD in our district. They were also here in the fall. And last summer, we had thirty teachers that did either a face-to-face or an online course with these authors from Turk. Um, so that was a big bonus. Um, the program isn't workbook-driven, although there is a student activity book portion of it. Um, and games are an integral part, and it's, um, built to be engaging for both teachers and students. And I wanted to mention, what are the guiding principles behind this particular program? So, one is that students have mathematical ideas, that students come to math class with thoughts about numbers and shapes. And how can we build on those thoughts and help students to make sense of and make meaning of the math for themselves? Uh, the next guiding principle is that teachers are engaged in ongoing learning about the math. Um, and this program has a lot of professional development built right into it, so built right into the units themselves. There's a bunch of teaching notes, there's examples of student work that teachers can review, there's examples of, um, a potential, um, dialogue that could happen between, um, teacher and student, although this is year one, so sometimes teachers say to me, well, my students aren't exactly saying what the book said maybe they would say, um, but we are working on that. Um, and, you know, teachers can read this content either individually, or we often look at the teaching notes, um, on Wednesday afternoons as well. The third principle is that teachers can collaborate with students and the curricular materials to create the enacted curriculum. So, teachers are really active in the implementation. They're, um, observing students, listening to students, and making teaching decisions based on what they see in here. Now, um, each day, it looks a little bit different in Investigations Classroom, so the structure kind of changes and evolves. There's certain parts to it, um, that are color-coded here. So, the pink at the top is a classroom routine, and that is often called ten-minute math. This is an example from a fifth-grade unit at the beginning of the year. Um, so we have these ten-minute routines, sometimes we do them at the beginning of the lesson, sometimes teachers do that in the morning, um, or they might do it at a different break in the day, like after recess or something like that, um, just to build those routines in. Um, but it's not necessarily always at the beginning. So, aside from the routines, we have teacher-led activities. We have, um, a mix of teacher and student activities. We have independent, um, student activities. We have this thing called Math Workshop, which I'm gonna show a video of in a second. Uh, we have discussions, uh, which are a really big part of it. And then we, um, have assessment activities. So, that's what it looks like. Um, and now I have two very short videos, well, three minutes each, about, um, to show you just what workshop looks like and then what dis, uh, discussion looks like.
Math Workshop provides an opportunity for individuals, pairs, or small groups of students to work out a variety of related activities that focus on similar mathematical content. A math workshop generally includes two to four activities that students do over several sessions. By repeatedly playing a game or solving similar problems, students refine strategies, use different contexts, and bring new knowledge to familiar experiences. I set up in a few different ways. I think about what the students know, so, um, placing them in groups, um, where I know that they have some sort of support. Um, because typically, I'm in here alone. And for example, if a student I know is, has a strength in one of the games or has a strength in one of the activities, I will try to partner them up with someone, um, that is struggling or needs a little extra help. Because when I, when it's not workshop, I'm, or actually any lesson, I'm usually circling and I don't, I can't meet with every single student, so that's how I kind of prepare for the groups. I am going to make sure that Groups One and Two are starting with Session Activity A and then moving to B. And again, I'm always placing that first activity that they go to, um, that have, that activity is the crucial activity of the day. Not that they're not all crucial, but the activity that's related to the discussion. Um, so I was thinking about that, what am I discussing at the end, or what is the discussion for the next day? I always want to make sure that they're prepared, and they've done the work that they needed to do, um, before the discussion. I like them to work in partnerships because then, um, they're forced to use the language, they're forced to read the problems out loud, they're forced to kind of critique, um, other people's reasoning. Um, they're forced to kind of understand a different way of doing it if they, if it's different from the way they're doing it. And also, they're forced to ask questions. So, if there's, you put a line there, it's close, either way, it is the same thing. So, you're just adding sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eight, and then you're subtracting or adding or something. But you don't give anything to the main thing, solve it and then put it in the white space. Yeah, so it's basically, I don't, it shouldn't be a question, it's a question. It's helpful to ask a question, because then you can understand where they're, where they're coming from. So, fostering that ability of asking those questions, because it's like me. I would say, what did you do here? Explain it to me, what, what were you, you know, what's your... Explain it to me, what were you, you know, what's your, what's that path that you took? When you look at your cards, what do you think about? Actually, like, okay.
I tried to get in.
You're trying to get one thousand? How do you step it up? What's your strategy? I'm pretty sure you want to be Becky.
I tried to make like, uh, like, uh, five, I tried to add three, I tried to add three, I tried to add three.
Okay. What, you want to make ten at the one's place? If you make a ten at the one's place, it would be four and a half. Something more. Within the game, I, within any of the games in Investigations, I took.
Okay, that was just a quick glimpse about Math Workshop. I just wanted to mention, when we run Math Workshop, we have done kind of math centers in the past where maybe there's three or four different centers and students kind of rotate around and do each center for ten minutes, let's say. And kind of a bell goes off and they move to the next one. So Math Workshop is a little bit different in that students kind of have agency. They can choose which centers they're going to. And teachers have various different protocols for working that out in their classrooms. So it's not the teacher telling them, do this for ten minutes, then stop and do this other thing. So if they're really engaged in the center, they could stay there longer or they could move around the room more quickly. And now I'll give you a quick glimpse of a discussion. This is first grade.
Three, three, one. One. I love that you did that. Why do you think I love this? Why do you think? Josh. These three numbers, how many cells of crayons do I have?
Three.
Two. I have some of you were working on how many crayons. I gave you a third color, so you started doing three at it. But with here, we want to do just two. So Sean, can you tell me, you said three plus one would give you ten. And I have to add one more number.
Three.
Seven. Now, I have three red and seven blue. I already have that up there. How can I switch it so that I have a different combination posing those two numbers?
Seven plus three equals ten.
Seven plus three equals ten. Does that count? Does that count as a different one? Who can tell me why that counts as a different one? Why does it count? No one, I'm curious, why does it count? I have three plus seven equals what? And seven plus three. Why are those different?
Because, um, when you're like doing like three plus seven plus ten, you could go like, you could like switch them around and then it plus ten too.
Teaching us really helps me guide discussions because it gives examples of dialogue between teachers and students. And it helps me know what I should be expecting or kind of where I should be anchoring the discussion to the students. Jacqueline, how many bits I've added? Four, what makes you sure that it's four?
Okay, so that was an example of a discussion. And often at the elementary level discussions are when students come to the rug and they're really sharing their strategies, getting into, you know, which strategy is efficient in this context, which maybe isn't efficient. And so that, I wanted to give you kind of a mental image of what that looks like because both workshop and discussion, you know, really didn't exist maybe when you all learned math way back, way back when. So you know, you can see kind of how the classroom structure has changed and how Investigations is supporting that. So I wanted to take a few minutes to look at some math, just examples of math within the program. And as I said, there's this ten-minute math routine. Here's an example from first grade. So this is a quick image that would show on the smartboard for three seconds. And then students would either have to copy it on their paper or they could build this out with counters. So we'd flash it up for three seconds, it'd go away. It would flash up one more time for three seconds and they'd try to copy this. And then the teacher would get into, okay, what do you see? What do you notice here? And students would say things like, well, I saw on the second card there, maybe I saw three and one. And on the other card, I already had a three. So I knew it was three and three and one. Or I saw two and two on the second card and on the other card, I saw two and one. And they would get into all the different ways that they saw these dots here. So we're actually going to take a second to do a very, very quick image using the Lincoln cubes that you have on your table. So you can take your ten Lincoln cubes and I'm going to flash up a building, we should be calling it here. And you are going to try to copy that building with your cubes.
This is a fifth grade example.
It doesn't make it any better.
Pressure, there's real pressure now.
Pressure.
Everybody?
Yeah. Now we have to build it?
Now we try to build it, I'm going to show it again.
Do you have to use all the cubes?
No. Okay, are you ready to see it again?
I was worried.
Can you compare what you created to the adult building that showed up here? What did you notice about the parts of this building? There's symmetry? Which part did you start with?
So there's four groups of two and one, one.
Okay, so four groups of two and then one central piece, yeah.
I did, I kept the row of five since it was already there and I just moved two and two.
That's what I did too.
The row of five going this way?
The row of five already, yeah.
Yeah, and then adding two on either side.
Okay, we're going to try one more. Okay, so are you ready for it here?
Mm-hmm.
Here it is. We can show one more time.
That was it?
How do we make the cubes do that?
I hope my second and third graders aren't watching.
Okay, so one of your, you're going to show it up. So you can compare what you build to what's here.
Yeah, yeah, let's go back.
And what did you notice first about this building?
I can't even put it together with this shit up there.
Four at the top and then two at the next level and then three at the other level. Okay. Did anyone notice something different about it initially? Everyone kind of did vertical levels, like four and three.
Mm-hmm.
So students would get, well, what if you did something, kind of doing vertically and then two behind it, things like that.
So there you go, that was just an example of a quick image. But right away, you get at kind of the flexibility of looking at a shape and seeing it differently and really honoring that you're all kind of seeing things differently. You know, and in math, not everyone's solving a problem in the same way. And students are having really rich discussions about, oh, this is how I do it, but I understand that you do it in a different way. So here's another routine that comes up often in Investigations. It's called Today's Number. This is a second grade routine for this particular one. So Today's Number is eleven. And students would think of all the different ways they can make eleven. I'm not going to have you do this one right now, so I'm going to show you. Possible ways you can make eleven. So you can show eleven on a number line. On the bottom there, I showed it on an open number line, making a jump of five, another jump of five and a jump of one. You can show it with your Lincoln cubes, which you all have. You can show it with a ten frame in various ways. I just showed it with a ten on a ten frame and then one. And then all of these different expressions like eight plus two. Maybe you want to make a ten with eight and two and then add another one. Or maybe you want to add five plus six. But again, you're getting at kind of the flexibility of thinking there. Here's another routine, this is from fourth grade. It's a broken calculator routine. So there's a key on the calculator that's broken. For today, the key that's broken is six, but we need to make one hundred and fifty-six. So students would create five expressions that equal one hundred and fifty-six, not using the six key. And there's another stipulation that you also need to multiply by a multiple of ten. So here are some kind of expressions that you could do. So you could add up to get one fifty-six or you could start with a larger number and then subtract back and use parentheses and different ways there. Another routine is counting around the class. This gets into skip counting. So students would count around the class and let's say today, we're going to count by fives. And teachers would either write up on the board the numbers that students were counting or in this case, they could show it on a smartboard. So as students were counting five, ten, fifteen, twenty, they would think about, okay, well, what student would we be on if we were at number thirty? Get into that conversation as a class. And also look at all the numbers here and say, okay, what patterns do you see if I go across horizontally? Or what patterns are vertical, what patterns are diagonal here? What do you notice about the tens place, for example, in the rightmost column? And we'd have those discussions. So there are many, many, many games built into Investigations, as I mentioned. There's a bunch of these compare games, this is just one example from kindergarten, where students would pull, in this particular one, pull two cards each and they have to compare their totals. So who has the greatest total? Now, within games like this, sometimes you might be adding the cards, four plus six and six plus two. But there's a lot of other strategies that you could be using and students will come up with these strategies on their own. So this particular one, students might say, well, I noticed both Player One and Player Two, like I have a six and you have a six, so I'm not even going to think about that number. I'm just going to compare my four and the two. And we'll get into that. So kids aren't just adding, you know, and finding a sum. You know, they're really strategizing and they're thinking, well, which strategy would I use with these numbers? So we're going to take a few minutes to actually play a game. And that's what you have on your tables in the Ziploc. This is a partner game, play with the person next to you. It is from fourth grade, it's called Close to a Thousand. And the directions are there. But basically, each person needs eight cards. And you are going to, to take your eight cards, make a three-digit number plus another three-digit number and see who can get closest to a thousand. We'll play one round and then we'll talk about how it goes.
Yeah, we just get six cards.
Eight cards, we get eight cards. You're all going to use it. Six, I'll pick your best six. And we have to add.
You'll have eight cards to each player. Eight cards to each player. All directions.
Oh, we got a wild card.
Use any six cards to make two numbers.
That's too bad, because now I'm going to win. Wait, I'm not sure. What does that mean? I'm trying to beat you.
They use any six cards to make two numbers. So five and a two, it's six hundred.
And I.
Okay, and we'll get close to, close to a thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, go over a thousand? So like.
Ah, wild cards are any digit.
You each kind of make your own. Would you go over?
Oh, look at else I got.
Let's see, like, if I use these two.
I got all the wild cards. So when you get your numbers together.
Check it out.
Yes, yes, but if.
Two numbers.
Have your two numbers together.
But for example, if your total score is nine, one hundred ninety-nine, your score.
Oh, wait a minute, I want to use two sets of three, right?
Your total is this, it's positive one.
So you have to use three.
Your goal is to have your final score at the end of the five rounds be zero.
Nine eighty-eight. Some twenty.
Maybe. So that's nine, I'm going to be under this time. But I don't have an eight. Or no, I'm going to be over this time.
You get to, you get to add the two numbers together.
That's not going to work.
No, we must be re-dealing. Yeah, put the cards in discard pile. Yeah, that's a three, add a thousand.
Okay, just in the interest of time, we're going to talk about some of the numbers that we have.
Are you saying we're failing math right now?
Would anyone like to share the two numbers that they added?
I got that. Are you sure this isn't for like high school?
Can you ask the question again?
Huh? Would you like to share the two numbers you added?
I have six oh seven and three ninety-three because.
Oh, I got one of those.
Oh, six oh seven and three ninety-three. So there were a lot of good questions going, like, can I use a digit more than once? Can I go over a thousand? What does that mean? And kids really get into, especially using wild cards, what strategy would you use there? There's a variation on the bottom, which. If you're, use plus or minus numbers, if you're above or under a thousand. And at the end, you do this five times basically and then you add up yours to get the total. So, and this is just a little glimpse at a game. You know, instead of just doing a worksheet with all these addition problems, we're really, we're really strategizing, doing addition. But we also need a pretty deep understanding of place value when we're thinking about like which digit to put where. So that is a small taste of the games that are in Investigations. Now we're going to talk about secondary.
I can get you all the way there, yeah.
All right, lots of, lots of fun. I hope it gets better, my voice should warm up.
That was fun.
That was fun, isn't it fun? It's way more fun than doing a worksheet.
Way more fun.
That's really, I'm going to try to put this closer. That's really what we have come to realize. Thanks, that actually, yeah. So I wanted to talk about six through eight as best as I'm able right now. And I wanted to just, we're going to talk briefly about lesson structure, look at some new routines, so we'll have a little more play. And then we really wanted, one of the things the six through eight teachers are really appreciating and can't fully appreciate this year because it's the first year in all six through eight, which is there's a continuity that runs through. So I wanted to give an example of that. But each lesson, oh, that doesn't help you. Each lesson includes, you know, thank you, someone gave me water. And I wish that would help, but it actually doesn't. But we'll try it. Oh, there's a little better. Each lesson includes a warm-up and, you know, gets kids in, invites kids into the activity. There's many instructional activities. Sometimes it's challenging to fit them in a class period, but there's one or more instructional activities. But one of the things that I see as a curriculum leader, is that when I go into classrooms that I think is really important, is the lesson synthesis. So that's really helping teachers identify the core importance of that lesson and making sure that they are hitting the mark, right? So, and it helps them guide when they have to make decisions on the fly, which you do multiple times in a class block. It helps them really center on to make sure I'm doing the right ones that are going to help my kids really wrap their head around what's important. The other piece, just to check in, is a nice cooldown. And so most lessons have all of these components, which help, you know, consistency day to day because the activities change quite a bit. So I wanted to look at some instructional routines that, that we see in elementary. I think you have Notice and Wonder as well. And that really hit at language and understanding. So here's an example of Notice and Wonder. And that really hit at language and understanding. So here's an example of notice and wonder. Notice and wonder. Here are three ways to write a subtraction calculation. And so what do you notice or what do you wonder about, about what's written there? What do you notice?
Wondering if the five is the same five whole number in all three scenarios.
Okay, so five is a five whole number in all three? What else do you notice?
It's moving. The five is moving.
Yep, five is moving. Good. What else do you notice? Or what do you wonder about?
Wondering what the heck the answer is.
The answer is, I guess it's going to come in just a minute. Which is the correct setup? We wonder that.
Where's the decimal point in the five?
Where's that decimal point in the five exactly? And so those are, anything else you notice and wonder? So those are, those are questions. What it does is it brings you into the question. It brings you, it brings you in to saying, okay, that's important. Where is that decimal point? And you start to question that. It's followed up with, with these questions, which is, you know, Claire brought a photo for 17 cents and paid with a $5 bill. So that helps you wrap your head around, where should that decimal point be? You know, how much would Claire get in terms of change? And so it puts it in a real-life example. So you can see, so kids have a sense of, all right, where is that decimal point when it doesn't exist? And money is a really great way to do that. I actually, I got to see this in a sixth-grade classroom, and it, they were just really funny, because they were like, this one's right. The one on the left is right. Like that's, they just couldn't wrap their head around wondering about the others. They just, you know, they want it, but they, but if a kid isn't all there, so if all the kids aren't there, most of them were, which is great, but if they're not, it gives you a chance to slow down and pay attention to what's important. When I look at a problem like this, what do I need to think about? I need to think about decimal point and place value. And so we have other notice and wonders. This one's from a seventh-grade classroom that I just wanted to share with you, but again, it gets you into, before we start, this is usually a warm-up activity, before you start into an activity, just what do you notice and wonder about that table? So you begin thinking about tables. And what information can we get from tables? And how does proportional reasoning work? And so it gets you into there. Another similar one, and this is from an eighth grade, though eighth grade has notice and wonders as well, but something similar is, which one doesn't belong? So there's another routine that comes up regularly, which is which one of these doesn't belong? And so I'm going to ask that question to you. Which one doesn't belong, do you think? C. And if you want to, you can check in with your neighbor and say which one you think doesn't belong. Or we could just shout it out in this nice friendly environment. Which one do you think doesn't belong?
C. That was a, you're wrong look.
That was, from me?
Yes.
Oh, gosh, no. No, I think I'm just like, I'm just holding it together right now. No. So which one do you think doesn't belong? I didn't hear, did we get an answer?
I said C.
Oh, you said C?
I said that, and you gave me that look.
Oh, I didn't even hear it. I'm sorry. So C. So why do you think C doesn't belong?
Because it has defined shape as opposed to the curvature.
Yeah, so what do you mean by a defined shape? I'm just going to ask you, right?
Or blunt, blunt shapes, more so.
Like hard, hard edges, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so C does, yes. Further from me, okay. All right. So it has, right, has hard edges, good. Does anyone think a different one doesn't belong?
There can be cases for B and D also.
You can make an argument for B.
Right.
Why B?
Because B is moving horizontally, everything else is moving vertical.
So B is moving horizontally? What do you mean by that?
So while you have a U shape in A, A, and S shape in C, and a vague backwards N in D, you have a C in B, so it's predominantly moving sideways as opposed to up and down.
So you're saying this C is horizontal shape, right?
I think it's B. I'm going to say B. D.
So why is that D?
So because D is actually using just plot points instead of solid lines.
So it's not a continuation, it's a plot point?
But they also don't go towards infinity. They intersect on the vertical and horizontal axis.
Well, we don't know about that on D.
So, so, sorry.
So think about all the language you just came up with, right? So is there any one right answer?
Depends on the question.
There isn't. There is not one right answer, right? Actually, we can make an argument for all of them. And that's what we ask kids to do, is we say, so I'm sorry, my face is something different, but. It might be the hour of the day, but, so, yes, we, we, any of them could be an argument, but we've pulled out a lot of great language. So now we're into thinking about shapes, and we're into thinking about position, and we're into thinking about things that are important. And now we can begin to study quadratics or whatever we choose to, functions. So now we're going to play a game. Guess my rule. So I've actually pulled it up on my screen, but you're going to give me a number, and I'm going to give you an output. So you're going to give me a number. I'm going to put it into this black box, and I will tell you what number pops out. And the goal for you is to guess what the rule is. Sound fair? Okay. Who's got a number for me?
Seven.
Seven. All right. So if we put in seven, I don't actually know what the rule is, because I'm playing it online. So we put in seven, we output 12. So if you put in seven, you output 12.
Zero.
You're supposed to figure out what the block box is to get to 12.
So what's the rule? What's the rule that's happening? From the number I take in and the number I output. What did I do to that number?
So you added five.
You think you added five? So do you want to check that, or do you think that's true?
No, we want zero.
So that's why Michelle's saying zero. She, why are you saying zero, Michelle?
Because if it, it's going to tell me where the vertex, or if it's linear, it's going to tell me the Y intercept.
So she knows more. As a math teacher, she has some understanding of kind of that beginning.
Lauren knew too. Lauren knew that as well.
Yeah, Lauren's next. You go and say zero. Is there another way, let me ask before we go there, is there another way we could get from seven to 12? What's another way we could get from seven to 12? We could add five, or.
Multiply by two and subtract two.
Yeah, so we can multiply by two and subtract two. So sometimes the, the routines are, are complex. They go from easy to complex. So if we put in zero, we do output five. And so what is the rule? But again, you have some agency there, right? You have some choice in what you're doing. I could give you a worksheet of inputs and outputs and say, what's the rule? But it's more valuable if I'm playing with a partner. So some of these games, this game, Guess My Rule, is me and a partner. So I have the rule, and you're trying to guess what it is. And so it pairs us together really well. If I said to you, what was the number that was input? Who gave me the input? So you, you did, right? How did I know what to do with that? And who, and how did you get the output? So what you want kids to realize at this level, when we're first talking about functions, is that where does the, the input comes in and does something, and the output. Could you put a number in and get a different output? If you put the same number in, could you get a different output? So if you put seven in, could I get something other than 12 out? If I add five, if the rule is add five, sorry. If the rule is add five. Could I get a different number out? And so that's a really important part of the idea around function that we're trying to drive home in the eighth-grade year. So the last thing we're going to play is Info Gap. And this is really a fun one to watch kids do. And there's, there's a, there's a language routine here. So you, I have the data card, which means I have information that you're trying to get. So your problem says, a recipe for salad dressing uses oil and vinegar. Claire made a certain amount of this dressing. How much oil did she use? So I start by saying, what specific information do you need? And you're going to ask me for some information. Can you tell me, and you'll tell me something you want to know about. And I'll ask, why do you need that information? And you'll tell me why. Does that make sense? So your goal is to find out, how much oil did she use? So what specific information do you need?
How much salad dressing did she make?
How much salad dressing did she make? Claire made a total of 28 teaspoons of dressing.
It's a ratio between oil and vinegar.
The ratio of oil to vinegar, oh, sorry, I forgot to ask, why do you need that info? Sorry, that's the important part. Why do you need that information? Why do you want that information? So I'm going to ask you, yeah, why do you need it?
Why do you, because in order to unders, well, you need to figure out, if the two ingredients are oil and vinegar, and you have a final amounts, you can work backwards to figure out how much of ingredient one or ingredient two you have. So knowing the, the total amount of dressing she made, well, and then some other additional information can get you to solve for the unknown.
Sure, okay. So you asked the ratio of.
Oil and vinegar.
Oil to vinegar, and the recipe is four to three.
Which way?
So that would be oil, oil to vinegar.
What, how do you know?
How do I know? No, how do you know what, which, which way the ratio goes? Okay, so he asked, that's a good question. So ask your question again.
The ratio between oil to vinegar.
Oil to vinegar, so it starts with oil to vinegar. So four.
So we know.
Oil to three vinegar.
16 teaspoons.
She was a math major, you know that.
A long time ago. 16?
What, so you're going to go right to the answer?
Oh, sorry.
Are we ready? Are we ready to go right to the answer? So that's fine. I think you do have enough information, right? You feel like you have enough information?
Yeah.
And so you have 16.
Teaspoons.
Teaspoon, was it teaspoons or tablespoons?
Teaspoons of oil, right? So, so by controlling, kids can control what information they're given. So one of the challenges with word problems in general, nice job, you guys are doing a great job. One of the challenges with a word problem in general is that, like, I give you all the information, and then I'm very excited when you get the answer, but I gave you everything you needed, right? Whereas in this idea of Info Gap, is you have to choose what information you need. You have to tell me why you need it. And, and then I can give you that. And so the, the game is what, half the group, one person gets the problem card and one person gets the data card. And so they have different information, and they switch positions. But by, by thinking about their thinking, like, why do you want that information, really helps them boil down and share why, why that would be useful to them. So I bring these language routines. When Adam Hickey came and talked to our six through 12 from Lamark School, talked to us six through 12, one of the things he drove home is that we need language routines. We need kids to be using language in all of our classes. We need them to be reading, writing, speaking, listening. Because when you do those things, that's what builds the internal language. That's what builds your thinking strategy. So many times in math, kids just do math and they don't know they're actually thinking. And so these activities slow students down to get them thinking, like, what is actually going on in my brain as I do this? And so when we think about those activities, there's might be a number talk, or there might be a critique, correct, and clarify. So I'm going to give you some critique, I'm going to correct it, and then we're going to clarify what we understand about it. The Info Gap, notice and wonder, think, pair, and share. Those things get us in the language back. So if you think back to your traditional math classroom, you're spending a lot of time, or I did in the, in the school, spent a lot of time listening and writing. Right? Listened to the teacher, and then I did a lot of writing. And so these routines get you out of that, and they get you reading math and thinking math and speaking math. And that is what is going to make it stronger for the students as they move forward. So as we look at, one of the things that the teachers are finding really excited as they look to next year is there's a lot of continuity six through eight. So this photo, as they start talking about equations, every, every equation unit that begins, and that's in sixth and seventh, it's a unit six, and in eighth grade, it's a unit four, starts with this picture. So there's something valuable about that, right? We're going to go, and we're going to go to this model. It has a couple models for equations. This is just one of them, and it's a hanger model, a balance model. But so it gets kids noticing and wondering. And so as they go from sixth, seventh, and eighth, it'll be interesting to see what they see differently every year, being that they've seen the same visual. What's that?
Hidden in plain sight. I'm just making reference to the presentation.
Oh, yeah. And so, and so in sixth grade, we'll see things like this, and we'll say, you know, what's one thing that might be, that must be true? You know, well, it must be true that green, the green triangle is heavier than, or is more valuable than the blue square. What's thing that could be true? And so kids will say something like, green could be three and blue could be one. That could be true. And what's one thing that cannot possibly be true? And so getting them in that kind of thinking, it dives you into the diagram. It dives you into the diagram that I, so I have a way to, I begin to start and interpret and make sense of that diagram. In seven, in sixth grade, oh, yep. And then they, they make them more complex. You can add more pictures. So in seventh grade, we're seeing more figures. We are also seeing in seventh grade that move to, now we're, now we're going to talk about variables, and we're going to talk about numbers, and we're actually going to be talking about different ways we can do it. Is this two, can we see this in two different ways? Can we see this as two times x plus three? Or can we also see it as two x plus six on the right-hand side? And so we begin to get, help kids see those things in different ways. And when we get to eighth grade, this is a whole, this is a really fun one to watch students wrestle with, because it's a solving equation. So they actually are solving this equation to find the relationship between the triangles and the squares. And going from, you know, A to B, you remove two red circles. They're all fine with that. And going from B to C, they really struggled with that, because they removed different things from each side. And so really what we realized after a little bit of work is that they cut them in half. They cut each side in half. And so I'm getting kids to think about solving equations in different ways, that it's not always just removing in that idea of a balance, that you don't have to just remove the same thing from each side. But if I cut them in half, that will keep it in balance as well. And then they, I can talk about that and appreciate different strategies. And so you can see, it goes from very straightforward to very complex over the eight years, but there's some, there's some continuity in each of those models. So that is, you know, we wanted to run you through that K through eight curriculum and just give you a glimpse of what, what is in it and what we, what we've been working on for this year. And if you have any questions for any of the three of us, we'd be happy to take them.
So how does, how does homework work at this point? Are you, I mean, you're doing a lot of exploratory math. Are you doing homework? How is that working?
So we are. There is, there is a homework. There are homework routines with, with this. There's a homework. It's not called homework. It's called practice problems, I think. So there is extra practice that is getting assigned for homework. And teachers are doing it in different ways. They're signing all of it. They're signing some of it. But the idea that we still really value having kids go home and practice some more. So we do still value that. I want you to go home and think about these things as well.
And is there math homework in elementary school?
Oh, that's a good question.
Or does it look different?
It looks different in elementary, yes. We don't give a lot of homework in the primary grades, for sure. We might send some games home, or all the games in investigations are also accessible online. So we have them digitally. So that game that you played, like Close to a Thousand, you'd be able to do that with cards, like online. You know, we have student activity books in each grade, so we have these student activity books pages that kids are doing for practice, but they might be doing that during the school day, like during morning work or something like that. So you might not always see it going home, but the practice is happening. And also this year, we're piloting an online practice program called Freckle. We're just looking at, we used to do IXL in the district for practice, and we're looking at like what digital tools are out there for, for practicing online.
Any other question?
Any other questions?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to thank Christine and Jen for their hard work in putting all this together. And I hope you really got a feel for how math feels, math instruction feels different, right? One of our transfer goals as a district is for our students to enjoy math. And kind of looking at how much fun you were having with this as well, I think you can see that the programs that we've adopted really do have that approach, of helping them to really kind of see the connections and find math exciting and to enjoy math. So thank you very much for listening to our presentation this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Up next, Glenn Kuchar from the MASC has joined us tonight to sort of help us begin to facilitate our superintendent search and really what we need to do about getting started. started with the entire process, you know, from really coming up with a immediate plan and then looking more long-term. Glenn, I have a seat up here, I don't know if you want to come up. Sit right on the end.
Right, you can sit here.
Very well. Thank you for your patience. You can pass one of these out to everybody. Just pass them down. No, I'm good, thank you.
Well, Glenn, thanks for joining us tonight.
Mr. Chairman. You ready?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I've provided you with two documents, neither of which is confidential. One is a memo that we provided for districts that are possibly looking for an interim superintendent, as which is an option. The other is a document called a vacancy in the superintendency, which is a decision tree and checklist of all the things that you need to think about as you get ready. It's late in the year. A superintendent search can be conducted very quickly if you minimize the process. In many cases, however, the school committee makes a determination that the community has some expectations about process, so that that's up to you. When the committee decides that it's better to take a step back and think about how you'd like to proceed, they will often consider seriously the option of appointing an interim superintendent, as which is an option. The other is a document called a vacancy in the superintendency, which is a decision tree and checklist of all the things that you need to think about as you get ready. It's late in the year. A superintendent search can be conducted very quickly if you minimize the process. In many cases, however, the school committee makes a determination that the community has some expectations about process, so that that's up to you. When the committee decides that it's better to take a step back and think about how you'd like to proceed, they will often consider seriously the option of appointing an interim superintendent and beginning a superintendent search starting in the fall, early as possible, before the prime candidates are selected. Before you is a sort of checklist of the things you think about. If you are interested in pursuing an assistant superintendency, MASC provides that service to its members as part of your basic membership, there's no fee involved, and we can assist you in several ways in that regard. There are a number of people able and qualified to serve as interim superintendents who would be willing to do this. There's some technical and legal issues that can be worked around, but that's that's an option. Another option for you is to think about the timetable and the process for a formal superintendent search at some point, whether it's now or later. The the law only requires that you appoint a licensed or licensed eligible superintendent at a public meeting. So you could appoint anybody and get an interim temporary license if you wanted to. I don't mean just anybody, but you could very quickly make that decision. In fact, at your next meeting, you could actually appoint the formal superintendent without any process at all. It's the school committee's decision, and you have broad latitude on how to do it. Generally, the district will use a search committee, because a search committee is allowed the option under the law of meeting an executive session to conduct an initial screening and interview of candidates. And if you're looking for candidates, people will be less likely to apply if their interest is public from the moment they express it. Most candidates prefer to go through a confidential process and then emerge for public scrutiny once they've been named to the the second round, which is where the school committee takes over. The school committee, as I said, is not permitted the option of executive sessions during the process of selecting a superintendent, except under the very specific and limited areas of talking about somebody's character and reputation, or physical and mental health, and only with the invitation of the candidate to be present. So that's it's not likely to happen. The search committee in most districts will see the applications, will decide whom to interview, will make recommendations to the school committee for what we call a final round, and then the school committee will take the process up from there and conduct another round of interviews. Sometimes the school committee invites the candidates to meet the people in the district as part of their final interview process, and frequently, the school committee will visit the sending districts of potential candidates to do part of their due diligence check. In the meantime, at that stage, formal reference checking speeds up, and you go through or should go through a fairly diligent process of checking the backgrounds of the candidates. The importance of a search committee is, A, it gives you an opportunity to get two looks at the candidate. As you consider a search committee, you want to think about the appropriate people to be present. Now, if you indulge me for a second, because I don't want to start coughing at you, I'm just going to take a cough drop. My presentation to you tonight is sponsored by Halls. We're selling everything in the way of raising money from-
Yeah, so we have a policy against advertising, so just, you know.
There are two schools of thought about who should be represented on a search committee. You should accept the fact that your faculty is going to mobilize immediately to try to have the greatest possible influence over the process. Others will try to help you with your search, whether you like it or not. That includes the media, who are not bound by the open meeting law, are not bound by the public records law. They can write what they like, and they don't have to ask permission, which is another reason that confidentiality can be important. The two schools of thought around this are whether or not the school committee should be represented on the search committee, and I will tell you, I am of the school of thought that says that the school committee should definitely be represented on the search committee to make sure that the interests of the school committee are represented on that board, and that the search committee doesn't go off on its own. I've seen too many search committees where certain individuals on the search committee will be more emphatic about who they want to see and who they don't want to see, and more often than not, that's driven by what's best for them and not what's best for the district. I'll sort of leave it at that, but I'd say it's it's good to have representatives of the faculty, good to have representatives of the community, and good to have representatives of the school committee. We've had very good luck inviting the police chief to join search committees, they're very effective members, and they're, they can be extraordinary. I don't want the police chief angry with me, but I'm just saying, the police officers on search committees have been very helpful, for a lot of reasons, but in particular, as you get candidates, they can talk to their fellow chiefs about whether or not candidates are collaborative and working with the school district. You may want representatives of the business community, representatives of whatever civic groups are important, and are the smaller, the better, because there's a lot of work that goes into a search committee, and those are a lot of schedules to reconcile. So if you're looking at a 25-member search committee, which is what one of our communities did recently, well, that that, you know, when somebody says, I can't meet, I work in Boston, I can't get here before 8:00 P.M., and I'm taking a vacation during the week of interviews, you have to reschedule, and I can't meet on Saturdays because of family responsibilities, or I can't work on Mondays because that's when the select board meets. And suddenly, it takes you three to four weeks to get the interviews done, and you fall way behind. Small group is easier to resolve. You also want to clarify who appoints the search committee. You have your probably your own policy and your own rules for that. And who'll get to select who gets to be on the school committee? And my strong recommendation is that whoever appoints committees for the school committee should appoint the school, the search committee. You know, with or without the advice and consent of the school committee, but I would not leave the appointment of search committee members to somebody else. In other words, I would not say to the union, you get a seat, appoint who you like. I would say to the teachers and the other members of the bargaining units, if anyone's interested, please approach, and whoever makes the appointments will make them. Usually, the parents at three levels are represented, and the faculty is usually represented at various levels. We can have another conversation about who make the best people to be on search committees, but the people who are most collegial and have the most effective interpersonal skills are usually the ones that are most helpful in getting your work done.
Kindergarten teachers, right? Kindergarten teachers.
You know, I am the spouse of and the father of kindergarten teachers.
Yeah.
I don't like people talking like this to me when I get home every day. But yes, they're they're very good at-
Communicating.
Yeah.
I didn't know that about you.
Okay, so you understand.
I didn't know that about you.
You know, I see this, I want this at the dining room table. Yeah, but 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 I wouldn't last five minutes in one of those classrooms, so I acknowledge their their great contribution to our world. The school committee will need to give the search committee some guidance about the general parameters, about how who you'd like to interview, how many, you know, do all the internal candidates get interviewed, do all the regional candidates get interviewed, how many finalists should be recommended to the school committee? The school committee will need to make some decisions about what kind of search criteria you use, what kind of promotional material you use. Interestingly enough, most of the superintendent searches have gone almost exclusively to electronic distribution of materials. You know, we 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 can assist you in your interim process by putting together promotional materials for you. I have a graphic designer works for our member districts all the time, and and generally, that doesn't cost anything, because it's a staff person. Electronic distribution doesn't cost anything. And we can put fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred pieces of mail out to a recruiting network, and you'll have access to our interim list and our recruiting list as well as a member district, and you can distribute stuff to them without cost. So you could conduct an interim search without any expense at all, and you could conduct a formal superintendent search without spending a lot of money, if that's what you wanted to do. And if you have the resources in the district to support the search, you could manage the search yourselves with technical assistance, and again, not pay a lot of money to get the search done. The the key factor that attracts candidates to a district is is finding the vacancy where it's most likely to be found, and that is on the website of the School Committee Association and the Superintendent Association. And both of those websites will post your vacancy for national distribution free. We get about eighty-five thousand hits on our website each year, which is exclusively for superintendents. The Superintendent's Association, I believe they get a million hits, because they post other positions, and people are interested. And you're no more than two degrees of separation away from anybody else in the United States. A superintendent in Jefferson City, Missouri, is going to call her or his Superintendent's Association and say, hey, call Tom Scott or Glenn in Massachusetts and find out why there's a vacancy. And yours is is very simple, superintendent's going somewhere else, and there's a vacancy. It's the superintendent is departing under very honorable terms. You know, what's going on in the district? Well, you don't have anything that's going to be problematic for a new superintendent. In other words, you're, you know, if they were missing money, if there was a scandal, if there was corruption, you'd have a problem. But that's, everybody's got challenges, and everybody has issues, but this is not a district, this is a good district, and this is a good place to come. They'll want to know if they have to sell a bond issue to pass their budget, because in most parts of the country, the district has to pass an annual bond issue, so you'd be fortunate in Massachusetts. The funding situation is better in Massachusetts, even though there's never enough money to do everything you need. They'll want to know what the board is like, and then they'll want to know what the community's like. They may also want to know whether there are opportunities in the area for the inevitable other adult in the household. Forty years ago, if you were hiring a superintendent, he would have come, and the wife and kids would have followed, and set up housekeeping and whatever else here. Well, now, the superintendent is as likely to be a she as a he, and invariably, there's another adult in the household who usually has a pretty good job. And you just can't leave Jefferson City, Missouri, you can't leave your law practice, you can't leave your principalship, you can't leave your your medical office, you can't leave your engineering firm, you can't leave your architectural place, and then just come and say, hey, here I am, where can I be a principal in September? It doesn't work that way. So occasionally, there'll be there'll be those kinds of issues, or there are opportunities for the other adult in the household. And I don't think anything will be discouraging for you as you look. Not everybody knows Hamilton, Wentworth as a place, it doesn't have the kind of visibility that that a Boston, or Lexington, or a Concord, or or Springfield, you know, some of the communities that are that are in the news more often. But it's very, very easy to find out about the community, and to find out what a good community it is. The regional superintendency situation adds a bit of a complication, but not much. And you can decide what you want for decision criteria, put that out to the universe, and get ready to go. It's not that complicated. And the extensive recruiting networks are available to you without fee, as just as part of a a membership. And if you want somebody to manage a search for you, that's a separate conversation, if you elect to do that. But at this moment, your choices are, do we start now and try to fill the position by June, or July, or September? Or do you spend some time planning and start looking in September for a position and use an interim superintendent? Now, an interim superintendency has a very distinct advantage. Everybody's on their best behavior during an interim superintendency, because the faculty does not want the interim superintendent saying to the next superintendent, you know, watch out for this guy, watch out for this one. They're problematic, they want to be exemplary as they go through a transition process. And secondly, if there are some changes that need to be made before a permanent superintendent comes in, an interim superintendent can make those changes without having to worry about the backlash that might ensue. But generally, the interim superintendents are retired superintendents who are very skillful. You might, however, find some interim superintendent candidates who would come and audition for you and say, I aspire to be a superintendent, I would be willing to come and work for a year and see how it goes, and if you like it, we can extend that year to two, and if we like it, we can extend that year to three. And a lot of districts do that. So you might want to consider, if you're looking for an interim, casting the broadest possible net. Now, we have, at this moment, two districts that are also looking for interim superintendents. I believe that Marblehead is going to be looking for an interim superintendent, Waltham will be looking for an interim superintendent, and you'll be competing with them, but there's an ample supply of people, you know, there's the, most of our superintendents leave either to go someplace else or to retire. You can retire at fifty-seven and fifty-eight years old at eighty percent of your salary. And you've got thirty years left of potential good health. What happens is, they retire in July, and they're in their late fifties, early sixties, and by September fifteenth, they realize just how bad daytime television is, and they're calling us, saying, "I should have listened to you and not retired." But they didn't listen. "Find me something, I'm eager to go back to work." They are, there is some limitation as to how much they can earn, but you can usually work around that. I probably left a few things out, but you might want to take a look at this. It was actually written for you, but I did use the example of Waltham just to demonstrate what's happening there. Their superintendent is also leaving to take another position. He's going to be a college administrator.
So the last go-around, when Dr. Harvey was hired, we had somebody who managed for us, but it was, I don't think it was the MAC, I think it was someone else, too.
It was NENSTEC.
It was NENSTEC. But I understand that Masco did use the MAC for their search?
Yes.
Yeah. So can you talk about, like, what you do if you are managing the process?
If you're looking for search consultancy, I think we described that in here. The key difference between technical assistance and a consultancy is, in a consultancy, someone is here at every step and for every part of the process. So we would work with you to develop the master plan and schedule. We would develop the collateral material and distribute it, assist you in recruiting the search committee, we would orient the search committee. And then, the key part is, when the search committee decides whom to interview, we would facilitate that process. Now, the search committee is in control of that process. We facilitate, we don't tell them what to do. We make sure they don't violate the open meeting law, the public records law, or the ethics law, but we don't tell them who, we advise on which candidates are stronger than others, but the decisions are made by the search committee. We are the liaison with the candidates. We are present at the interviews. We assist in the developing of questions for the interviews. Now, we have an extensive, highly detailed question guide, which is also available to our members, so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel in that part of the process. We also are the people who deliver to the candidates the information from the search process. So after the, after the search consultant invites the candidates that we've been told to invite, and schedules them for you, and invite them, and host them, and shift them in and out, do the choreography during the interview process, we're also the people that call them and say, "Sorry, you're not going forward," or "We'd like you to go forward to the next step." Then we do the same thing over again for the school committee, and we would be at all of those interviews. We would be present at all of those interviews. We would collaborate with you on the process for reference checking. Usually, the school committee members want to do their own reference checking, but we do whatever works best. We will assist in facilitating site visits and scheduling and planning that part of the process. And once you meet to elect a superintendent, we will guide you through the voting process and the contracting process. We have model contracts. I'll just alert you that when a superintendent is hired, the superintendent is hired not by a formal hire vote, but by a vote to begin contract negotiations. In other words, we appoint someone subject to the successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment. Now, the superintendent's first call is going to be to the Superintendent's Association for their model contract. We would tell you never to sign that contract. You sign our model contract. Our contract protects the rights of the school committee. The Superintendent's Association would muzzle the school committee and limit its discretion within the law, so. And they know that's what I say about it, so they, I don't want you to think I'm talking about them behind their back on television, so they can see it.
What's a typical consultancy cost?
It depends on, depends on who you use, and you should talk to a bunch of different people. I believe I've listed them for you. Ours is ninety-five hundred dollars. It is generally the lowest fee, but you should understand, you've been a member of our association for seventy-five years, and part of your dues underwrites the cost of searching. So it's not like it's a bargain basement price. It's like, this is what we do for our members. There are others who will take a lot of your money, and you might, you should talk to them and see what it is. I didn't come here to sell anything, so I'm not, I'm not going to engage in that, but I've listed them all in the back, so you can, you can find them. No shortage of people eager to do that.
Now, if we, sorry. Now, if we were to, say, go towards an interim, and then we're, and then to start the process of looking for a superintendent, when do you put the search committee together, start putting it together?
Well, if you're looking for an interim, you don't really need, you don't need a search committee.
Search committee for the superintendent.
The school committee can be the interim search committee. You can bring the candidates in and interview them. There aren't that many, you wouldn't have that many interim candidates, and none of them are looking for privacy, because they're all retired and they don't care if, you know, they're former employers, they're current employers. With regard to the, a formal process and a formal full search, you want to get that thing started as, plan it in the summer, or plan it in June and July, and start right away in the summer, in September, with the appointment of a search committee, a schedule, an advertisement going out right after Labor Day, a close in early October, search committee interviews in October, and school committee interviews in November, and a hire made by, you could have a hire made by Thanksgiving.
Okay.
But depends on how much process you engage in. Now, the other thing is that many communities want to get feedback from their constituents, and there are two ways of doing that as part of a formal search process. There are focus groups that come together and give you feedback, and those are live focus groups, and they're held in different parts of the community, and they're held with the faculty and with stakeholders. There's also an additional option of putting an online survey out, so people who don't want to come out to meetings, who want full anonymity, can respond online. Again, an online survey is very easy to construct, very easy to gather that data. And when we do that, we, we own the data, but we give the data to the school committee whenever it asks for it. So when you're ready for that data to be public, we give it to you. So it's not a secret, and it's not turf-y, it's just that we're not subject to the public records law, so until we give it to you, it's confidential document. Sometimes, in the surveys, you know, if you get a couple of hundred responses, two or three of them might be highly inappropriate. So we want to make sure that before people are, people are referenced in these things with an expectation of privacy, that we take out the stuff that should not be public. The public is not subject to the open meeting law. Documents that are discussed at a school committee meeting are part of the public record. The public is not subject to the, to the public records law, except as a requister. So once the school committee gets the documents, anybody can, can ask for them.
Yeah. So if we created it, then that's a public document? But if you created it and create a report for us, then you can make the report something that's not embarrassing as a public document?
That's correct. So, I mean, if someone, someone gets out there and says, you know, "Mr. X at whatever school is the worst math teacher that ever came down the pipe and deserves to be fired." "Mr. X has the expectation of privacy and should not be libeled or slandered in that way." So you probably wouldn't see that response. But the issue, the other issue that's emerged is that some of our candidates, if you're interviewing somebody who has been a principal, or a superintendent, or an administrator, I don't know if any of you are educators, but if you are and have been an administrator, chances are, you've suspended a student from school, or counseled somebody out of the profession. And if you have done either, it means there are some parents or some people out there who don't like you, and believe that Satan sent you to ruin their lives. And they will, they will Google you every week to find out where you are, and if you're a candidate for the superintendency in Hamilton-Wentham, someone in Mayberry, Massachusetts, whose child you suspended from school just before the playoffs of their senior year, the National Scholarship, are going to be looking for you, and you'll hear from them. And they may or may not be objective, they may or may not be honest, but the stalking of candidates has become a serious problem because of Google and the internet. We've had people stalked for twenty-five years.
So when you-
We're not doing anything wrong, but just doing the job.
So when you and I talked on the phone, you had mentioned what you've mentioned earlier, which is sort of the importance of making a decision about if the interim is going to be someone who's been a superintendent and is kind of retired, or if we're going to have a wider pool and, like, allow that person to also apply to be the superintendent.
Yes. Waltham, for example, has elected not to allow the interim superintendent, the temporary superintendent, interim superintendent, to be a candidate for the formal superintendency. So that means that no one will get the upper hand, and they'll be looking at a pool of retirees.
Yeah. So-
In some cases, people welcome the interest of people who would, might take a risk and would like to be an interim superintendent, in the hopes that you'll like them and keep them.
So do we have to make that decision before we recruit, or would we make that decision after we see the pool?
You should make the decision about who should apply sooner rather than later.
Okay.
So you could say that the interim candidate may be considered or not.
Okay.
That might extend your interim pool a little bit. You might see people willing to take a risk. Now, if you do that, just remember that if you hire someone who's auditioning, they're sitting here auditioning for you, which means that at some point, you're going to need to sit here with them and say, "We're going to keep you," or, "We're not going to keep you anymore."
Yeah. Okay.
That's what makes being a school committee member so much fun.
Super fun.
Yes, that and budgeting.
And when do you think we should make that decision to start the interim search? Like, when should we make that decision? Should we have the open pool? Should we do that, like, tonight, in our next meeting, within a month?
You should do it soon.
Okay.
It's now the beginning of March, or almost midway through March. An interim search can be expedited pretty quickly.
Okay.
And most of them are available. They don't have to give anybody any notice, except the other adults in the household that they're going back to work. And then the other adults in the household immediately begin planning the big vacation that's going to happen with all that extra money right away. So you want to give them, I would make a decision before the end of the month.
And if, so if we were going to post this job online, you know, Dr. Harvey or Jeff would send you information?
You would, you would get us whatever you want, sent out to the universe of candidates. We would send something to our notice of vacancy. You want to tell them what they need to submit, where they need to submit it.
Yep.
Sometimes they-
Like, who's going to be the person who gets it? So that's something we should decide here, like, yeah.
Who's going to collect the applications when they come in? Would you want an application, or do you just want to go less formal and do a resume, a letter of interest, a couple of references? Most of these people will be pretty transparent about who they are, and they'll be known.
Yeah, okay.
And then you could get some, some decisions made.
You could facilitate it all electronically through SchoolSpring, for example?
SchoolSpr, no, not SchoolSpring.
Yes, this is what he was saying.
SchoolSpring for-
No, the collection of data.
On a superintendent search, SchoolSpring gets you nothing but junk.
No, I'm not saying post the position on SchoolSpring, but you could point them to SchoolSpring to facilitate the collection of data.
You could point them, that's correct. That's correct. You could point them to SchoolSpring, and then that would bring them, direct them to the district, and then your website could tell them what you want.
And it collects all the data.
And, and you, that's correct. Actually, in this case, see, with SchoolSpring, you put your stuff into the SchoolSpring database, and you see vacancies, and you push a button and say, "I'll do this one, this one, this one, this one," and you keep pushing buttons.
I'm not suggesting using SchoolSpring, I'm just using it as a, as a tool to facilitate the process.
Yeah, you could, you could. And then you might get people applying to be the superintendents of your buildings for the purpose of maintenance.
Right, like maintenance superintendent.
You might get people who, you might get some of our, the regulars who apply for everything, hoping that someone will invite them. You might get, but, but then you'll be able to tell who the more serious applicants are. You're right.
So does the MAC have an alternative for something like that? Right, because, you know, SchoolSpring at the same time does do a good job of actually weeding out, once you put in the parameters they're looking for. So if we were to move forward, you know, obviously, we have two searches going on, theoretically, two searches going on, interim and a full search, and, you know, we want to start moving that interim search, you know, immediately. If we were to say to you, "Okay, here are the parameters we're looking for, can you help us actually get the search out?"
And then we would, we would send it out, and the applications would come in. If, usually in an interim search, they come to the district. Sometimes, the district asks us to receive them. Whenever we get applications like that, we scan them, copy them, and produce electronic copies, so you save a lot of time. You could have all the applications either in your hands first, or quickly from us to send to you.
So I guess what I'm asking more is, on that interim search, we're looking for a, some sort of, like, clearinghouse to actually collect the data, because I imagine that there'd be at least a few internal candidates that would express some interest, or, you know, I would think so. So sort of, having it come into the district, I don't know, could be a conflict if there's not some sort of other-
Well, you might have internal, you might have internal candidates for your interim superintendency.
Right.
You, I have no idea whether you would or not, but if, and if you do, they go into the pool just like everyone else.
Right. So what I'm trying to say is, where's that pool going?
That's what he's, right? So would you have those go to, like, the chair of the committee? Would you have them go to, like, is the exiting superintendent? Would you have them go to Jeff?
Oh, I would send them to the, well, if you have, you have anyone who handles personnel, I would have them go to-
That's why, yeah.
Like, the personnel person?
Go to your personnel person and-
So I'm in charge of personnel, and I have an HR person.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the way I would recommend we do it.
And that's how SchoolSpring would work?
We shouldn't have to recreate the wheel.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's simple, it's in place. We hire a hundred people a year. I mean, it's, it's there.
And what's that person's name right now?
Yeah. Omni Remo is our HR administrator.
And we can provide you with any assistance you need and what you need to do with that stuff.
Yeah, that's the easy part.
Yeah, no kidding.
So as far as the interim search, or I guess what we as a board need to do now is sort of come up with an official or official stance on whether or not we're looking for interim, or going to try to conduct a full search, which again, would have to happen very quickly.
If you have strong, credible internal candidates, the presence of strong internal candidates will be known, and that will discourage the size of your pool.
Right.
So you might want to think about that as it affects your search. It can be an asset, it can be a liability. No one, you see, I said this before, the superintendent applicant community- The superintendent applicant community, first of all, it's a procrastinating lot. You'll get most of your applications in the last week.
It's like designers.
I see Mike laughing about that.
Secondly, they don't, you know, could be relatively timid about putting themselves at risk. So if there is a hometown favorite, and you're doing a search because the community feels you need to cast a wide net and for purposes of transparency, and I'm a highly credible candidate from another district, I don't necessarily want to risk being a good candidate but being passed over because somebody is a hometown favorite and is well-liked. And it's no great shame to apply for a superintendency and to be named a finalist. It would be, you know, it's no great shame to be a finalist in Hamilton-Wentham and not get the job. But it's no great honor either.
Right.
So people don't want, you don't wanna be known as the person who didn't get this district and didn't get that district. And suddenly, boy, why didn't you get that district? And this being a school district, and every place else being school districts, you know, people are always starting rumors, talking about stuff, and things take on a life of their own.
Well, and the other thing you and I talked about on the phone is that before Mike was hired, there was a interim superintendent here, and there was a big discussion about whether or not that person should be interviewed, if that person had to go into the pool. And because that decision wasn't made in advance, it caused some acrimony.
Actually, you know, before that, that, when that happened, we did five community meetings with the interim superintendent as the community vetted that person. We did five specific sessions, took detailed notes and reported to you on what the findings were to vet the internal candidate. And, and we've been known to do that as a courtesy to our member districts as well. If, if that's an issue, if you need some sense of how the community or what the community is thinking, and you wanted to have a community forum on that kind of an issue, we could facilitate that for you as well, just as a member service. Excuse me.
I think that was what you were talking about before. Like, if you, if somebody's auditioning and then you have to tell them no, that's really hard, and sometimes you have to go to the community for that, and it's kind of uncomfortable.
Well, sometimes it's easier to do some homework ahead of time before you do that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So knowing the situation we're in, knowing the timeline we're going for, and I think ideally, from a hiring perspective, just from my experience, I wouldn't even mind a little bit of crossover on the way out the door. What do you suggest our next steps being for tonight, for our meeting in two weeks?
Make a decision at that time about how you wish to proceed, and then immediately proceed to execute your plan.
Make a plan to have a plan.
And as I said before, it all depends on how much process you wanna have. And you know, we always tease our friends at the Superintendents Association. We always beat them in softball, because the school committee members are more interested in outcome than process.
All right, so if we were to make a decision on how to proceed tonight and decide to go with an interim candidate and try and facilitate, get that moving as quickly as possible, what would the next step be? I guess for me as chair in, you know, in utilizing the MASC?
To, to just confirm that you wanna do that, and to get us the materials necessary to put notices out to the universe of candidates to alert the interim community that there's gonna be a vacancy and that-
What would that material list look like?
You might wanna go on our website and take a look at what, what Waltham has put up.
Yeah.
Like a job description.
It's a job description?
It's generic, you know?
Pretty generic.
Yeah.
Should we put in anything special? Is there anything special needs to be put in because they're a regional?
There might be, you might want something, you might wanna indicate regional experience, a plus.
Preferred, yeah.
I certainly would not require anything other than an advanced degree. I wouldn't be more specific than that. You might wanna say something about a competitive salary, and they don't, they generally don't need benefits unless they're auditioning for you.
Yeah, okay.
And if there's anything special about what you're doing, if you've got a building project that's going on, if, if you have, well, you don't, but if you did have, say, districts that were going into turnaround status, that needed to be turned around. Anything special that you would, that you would require? If you were trying to fix a broken financial system, or which you're not in, or you were trying to repair relationships with the communities in your region, which may or may not ever be an issue, you just wanna put that in. And then we'd sort of get that out and, and just work on the logistics of the rest of the process.
I mean, we're considering an SOI, but I mean, this interim superintendent would have nothing to do with that. I mean, it would, it's gonna be a while, so yeah, so that's not, yeah.
And then frequently, an interim superintendent can be a facilitator for your search process itself. There are some interim superintendents who have been the interim superintendent and guided the district through a search process.
Okay, so they, someone who's been through that and can facilitate? Yeah.
And you know that as soon as someone smells there's an interim vacancy, we start getting the calls.
Yeah. Ooh, have you had calls already?
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. Okay, good. So basically, next meeting, we should-
As recently as the seat.
We should think about what our process is for next meeting, and then also vote in, you know, an agreement of what we want.
Correct. And then you save for a later time what you wanna do for a formal process.
Yeah, okay.
Thank Glenn, I don't know if anyone else have any other questions?
Is it our intention tonight to vote on something? Or is it our intention tonight to gather information for our next meeting?
I would actually, I, I think that we should speak tonight about what our attention is and sort of get a feel for, at the table. If we're all on the same page, we can vote tonight and move, which I kinda think we are for a change. And if not, sort of at least come up with some ideas to think about for next meeting.
I will leave that to you, and you can-
Yeah, you go home.
Appreciate it.
So that clock is wrong.
No place to be. I mean, I'm just saying, you don't even have that discussion.
So, yeah, so in, I mean, in the interest of, again, Glenn, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
In the interest of time, because it's, it's 9:17.
18.
25.
9:18.
Oh, it is definitely moving backwards. It is definitely moving backwards. It's 7:20, so we have plenty of time. I, so I really, maybe we should just get a quick feel for the table, you know, after hearing him, you know, like I said two weeks ago, and I think, I think that it's in our best interest to go with an interim and conduct a full search involving the entire community feedback in, in doing that rather than trying to replace someone for July 1. Excuse me, you know, from what I heard tonight, and whether I heard it wrong, it just, it seems like there's not much to this interim search as opposed to saying that we're interested in the interim search and then moving forward from there. So I think in best interest of timing, that unless anyone sort of has a different opinion and would like to sit on it a little, we just vote to begin the process of an interim.
Yeah, I would agree too, that we should go, that the superintendent search, because I've been around when it's had some problems, and we need to do a thorough search. So I would agree that we should vote in an interim and start the process, and then later the search, full search for involving the community for a superintendent.
So my, my question would be, I'd say we move, we make a motion to do that, and what should our next steps be about coming up with that search, that criteria, you know, that job listing? Right, 'cause I guess that would be the next, the next step.
Yes.
And so if we could sort of get that all in here right now, I don't know what you guys have for ideas. Obviously, I can take a look at what's been posted for, for others in the search, and I have no problem reaching out. So I have his personal cell number.
Well, even, I mean, our search criteria is probably very similar to what Masco's search criteria was.
Right, so I'm actually reached out-
Because they're regional, they're near hereby, they're high-performing. Their only difference is they're, what is it, seven to 12, and we're pre-cated.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be speaking with the chair of Masco about the search, their, you know, his involvement in the search process for the next day or two.
Okay.
So I, I can probably get their job description written from them, and then we can just add that to the, on the 27th is busy though, isn't it?
Yeah, could you possibly put it in the, you know, if you have something at stake?
Yeah, no, I will, I will, out of the, out of the interest of time. If, as soon as I, if I get anything in, I'll actually email it right out and drop it in Dropbox.
That would be great, 'cause then that helps us to think about.
Moving on the same. But that's why I sort of wanna move tonight, because I'm thinking that 27th is getting full. It is full. So if we could sort of do some of the legwork beforehand and just-
Yeah, yeah, so are you talking about the job description for the interim?
Yeah.
Okay. So then the question that Glenn asked is, is there anything special that we wanna identify? And that would be the open question here. Is there anything that anybody feels, right, because there are still some big pending things that we have?
Right.
Do we wanna highlight those, or do we feel like that we should just not at this point?
The, the-
I'm just asking a question, I don't know.
You know, that, I mean, we do have one issue that I can think about, that we had suggested the superintendent and assistant sup, I shouldn't say suggested, we voted for the superintendent, assistant superintendent was for a PNS, possibly for Long Meadow, but, you know, it's gotta, we don't know where that stands. And, you know, interim was, might, you know, do we want the interim then to, you know, follow up with that? To me, that was the only thing that could come to mind when he was talking, if we wanna, or we don't have to identify it and just interview it and find out. I mean, there's, yeah, there's both possibilities. How do we wanna look to, do we want them to have that background? Or, you know, like, who can negotiate? Or do we just find an interim and see how that goes?
I, I think the, for me, right, so that, that being able to negotiate a PNS is probably pretty par for the course at that level. I think in the interest of our district personally-
David, I can, so I'm seeing faces that aren't-
Yeah.
That are sending different non-verbal cues. And I'd say no, or they're saying no.
Right, but I mean, to, to single that out is a, you know, hiring requirement.
I would single it out now.
Right, so I'm thinking, if anything, it's in our best interest to have someone with regional experience.
Regional, yes, that's definitely- It's preferred.
And I think that that separates us from the Waltham.
I think you wanna have a license.
Well, I think that's guaranteed, right?
No, it's not guaranteed. You need to put that in your job description.
Okay, meaning licensed versus license-eligible.
Right, 'cause I'm license-eligible.
Yeah, I think you want somebody that's licensed.
Okay.
Search done, dude.
Yeah, right, here we go.
So you, I, I think you wanna be, so we do, my office does all the job descriptions. So I think you wanna be really clear with your minimum requirements. So I think you wanna be clear with educational, right? So do you, you know, a master's degree required, right? So superintendent's license required.
See, this is the stuff that-
Do they have a PhD? Or do they have to have a PhD? No.
No, no, no. Regional, regional school, regional district, district experience, preferred.
Advanced degree.
Advanced degree.
Advanced degree, yeah.
Right.
Preferred, not required, or you're gonna really limit your pool.
Well, it depends on how you define advanced degree. Masters.
Though I said masters required, I, I would require a master's degree.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
I don't think, can you, I don't think you can actually be superintendent without-
I don't think you can either.
I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah.
The CAGS, advanced.
You can't have a master's, master's degree, right? You don't have to have a CAGS.
So to me, the big issue that Glenn was talking about, just because he had really talked about it a lot before and then mentioned it tonight, is whether or not the superintendent, the tempor, interim superintendent would be allowed to be a candidate, to be the superintendent. And I think just having lived through that previous experience, it would be better to outline that in advance than to wait and see, because it did, it, it was a fiasco.
So what was, so-
It definitely was a fiasco.
Go back through the pros and cons? I didn't, I didn't quite-
He said the pros were, the pros of that are you might be getting someone who's trying to become a superintendent, or maybe, you know, someone internally who wants to try it out. And then you get to kind of work with them and see, hey, gee, this is working out great, let's keep doing it, or it's not working out and you have to leave. So that's, and you get a wider pool, because you would have those people that are moving up. Or you decide no, and then your only pool is really gonna be people who are like retired and experienced and, and, you know, are gonna just come in and do this as a gig, you know, for the year. And, you know, there's pros of both. I mean, you go one way, you're gonna get someone who's experienced, is gonna walk in and has been doing this. On the other hand, that person's been doing it, and they're gonna have their way. On the other hand, if we think there's somebody who wants to move up, or we are like, I mean, Dr. Harvey came in as a permanent superintendent, but, you know, he moved up from being a principal, and that could give somebody an opportunity.
But I would think that you would get very few of those types of people who are willing to roll the dice on their career.
I do too.
Not have a job in six months.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. I personally don't, I think we should do what Waltham did and say, you know, "We, we love you coming here, and we're gonna have you here for a year, but you're not staying."
No, I'm, I'm saying, why limit it?
You're not gonna be-
Why limit it? You could use the word "may," and, because you're gonna know that there aren't many people that are gonna roll the risk, roll the dice with their career.
Yeah.
And take a risk that some might, some, but you don't have to interview them either. You know what I mean?
So I mean, what, what that does by opening the candidate pool to, to hiring from the interim is if there is someone that happens to be a really good fit that's sitting there right now, we stand the chance of capturing them, and they might not be there when we do our full search next year. I, I think if, you know, we're just, we're clear about expectations and we're, you know-
I guess I'm not sure, what's the con to allowing an interim apply to be the full-time interim?
You end up liking them, not hiring them.
Less people will apply because they're gonna assume it's a done deal. So you're not gonna get a big pool of candidates at that point, which could be okay if you really like that person. But if you're-
But if you don't, then-
Don't, and then you, that person is in the pool anyway, because anybody can apply, right? Anybody can apply. Then people may perceive that it's a done deal when it's not a done deal. And that's kinda where we were before.
So, I mean, I just think if you're clear with the expectations from the onset.
Yeah, I agree with that. It's a good, good.
I'm just confused, because I always thought the term interim meant short period of time. So the expectation would be that if they meet-
They would have to reapply.
They'd have to reapply, right. So the pool is then open.
They would go through your, your permanent process in the fall, just like any other campaign.
Right, okay.
Technically, at that point, the interim could bounce from the, from the-
Right, they might not even make the cut.
Yeah, I mean, when I, it's interesting, because the process that Glenn was talking about-
But by definition, the person's an interim, right? So that should be their expectation.
And that's why I kept asking like the con.
That's on them, but they have to win it.
Right.
Right, they have no advantage. Right, they have no advantage.
Yeah.
Well, they do have the advantage in that the devil you know is better than the devil you don't know and people will some, and, and if they've been doing a good job, you. You would think that they're going to be the one you hire.
So if you think about the timing of the, of the process.
Which is okay, I'm just saying, I personally still have trauma from the last experience, so I'm bringing baggage to the table that maybe other people don't have.
But if you think about the timing of the process that you just talked about with respect to the permanent, right, so you're going to start a permanent hiring process in September. So y'all only have had July and August to interact with the, with the.
Right.
With the interim and, which will consist of one meeting with the school committee.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yeah.
So there'll be.
Person probably is trying to figure out, still trying to figure out everybody's name in such a office, like by the time like the search is really open.
I mean, essentially, there'll be no leg up for the interim, once the permanent process starts, if you started in, in September, as Glenn suggested.
Right, and, and I think that process went on longer.
Right.
Than it should have.
It did, the best.
So I think that probably made it worse than it.
Made it worse.
Should have been, yeah.
So I have a que- just a quick question, and you may have answered it, Jeff, in your last statement, is it, do we have a means to, if we like the interim? To promote them, if you will, to permanent without completing the regular process?
Technically, yes.
Technically, you could, right.
But it could.
I wouldn't recommend that.
Depends on what the community, yeah, the community is probably not going to like that.
That's not real transparent or collaborative.
Yeah, I mean, technically, you could hire somebody tonight.
You could, right.
Right. Right.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm just asking, because I haven't been through the process, so.
I mean, I know someone who had that happen to them, they literally, they didn't even know that they had been appointed superintendent until the secretary at the school told them when they came in the next day. Like, like, it can happen, it's not a good process though.
No, it's not, not advisable.
So if the interim had any intentions of ultimately applying, they would be applying essentially as they started, right, because you said the process is going to, they'll hire July 1. Process starts in September.
So when interim starts on July 1st, you post a position on September 1st, it needs to stay open for two weeks, right, that's, so it's now, now you can receive. Applications as early at, I'm making this up, early as September 15th, right, so that person and everybody else. Would be eligible to apply and then go through the cycle, the search committee, if that's the, what you guys decided to do and then so on and so forth.
And, and the larger separator here, I think that's, that's important and why, you know, I like the idea of having the interim be eligible is, you know. Where us, we at this table are really going to make the decision about what, um, we're looking for in an interim, right, and, and we're going to come up with a short, quick. Yet thorough list, um, whereas this full search, you know, there's going to be community involvement, there's going to be, you know, involvement from teachers, administrators. Um, as there should be, and creating that list is a lot longer and, you know, where this person sits in that longer list is, you know. Then if, if, if they're still interested in, I mean, the other thing too is, we could drive the interim crazy and they don't want to apply, so that's a very real possibility also. So I, 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 I think in, you know, why, why limit our, our pool? So.
I, I've just seen some, what's happened in the past and I just really would prefer not, um, just having the interim not be allowed to, you know, be part of the pool.
Can we do that? I mean.
Yes.
Yes, yes, you can, you can, yeah. Waltham's doing that.
It's not discrimination of some sort.
Waltham was doing it, Waltham's doing it.
It's just part of the job description.
Oh, I don't care what another district's doing, I want to know what we can do.
So in the job description, if that's what the committee chose, we will put language that say, would say interim superintendent.
Only.
Only, yeah.
Will not, will not apply or will not be eligible to apply for permanent position to be posted in the, the fall, in the fall of 2018.
Huge pool of retired superintendents who, that's what they go in and they're, they go in as interims.
Just seems so restrictive, I mean.
Right, I think you're limiting the pool.
Because, I mean, I know it's interim, but we still want a, we want a good person.
Right.
You know, qualified.
Yeah, but what you're going to get, what you're going to get, if you do that, is you're going to get someone who has been a superintendent for a period of time of their career. They're now retired, they can work the second half of the year and not exceed their maximum for retirement, and then they're going to work the second half. Of the, of the school year, which will be in another calendar year, and they'll be able to make their maximum, and then they're not going to work for the rest of the year. So it's kind of like, do you absolutely want to have it, someone who's had experience to be your interim? Or do we want to potentially have someone who has no experience come in as the interim? Because they're thinking about becoming a superintendent.
But you wouldn't even have to interview that person.
Right, what do you mean? An interim. No, you don't, you don't, but it limits, if, if the community out there of people who apply for jobs believes. It's a done deal because there's an internal candidate, which happens a lot, then you just don't get as many people to apply, okay? Yeah, that's the decision, so, and it, it can, it can go either way, it doesn't, I mean, we don't know.
Okay, it, uh, being 9:35 now, I actually think this is a really good productive conversation, but I, I think we should, um. Make a motion that, um, we're going to begin the process of putting together a job description for an interim superintendent. And, uh, like I said, I'll reach out to resources and share any information that I get, um, via email and Dropbox. And just be cognizant that if I do email everybody, that we're not responding back to a group text, uh, you know, in a, a group environment. So does any, so I, I think that's, that's the motion we make tonight, so why don't we do that and then we'll sort of just see if there's, if we think there's a secondary motion that we should be making. So again.
Are we ready for the motion then?
Yeah, I think so.
I move that the Hamilton, Wenham Regional School Committee move forward with posting an interim position for superintendent and later we'll be looking at. A full-time superintendent at a later time.
Second.
All those in favor? Four, five, six. All right, so again, just to move on, do we think we, there's another motion we need to make tonight, I can't really think of anything without sort of tying us down, because I think this is going to set us. With a good course of thought for the next two weeks, um, which have, I, I think we'll have a lot more questions and answers to come up with then, so I, I think. It would be in, in, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be in our best interest to sort of leave it at that and then begin moving forward.
Yeah, because we'll seem to, we'll still need to review the job description and get agreement on that one, and that would be the opportunity, I think, to figure that next step part out.
All right, so, um.
So meaning we're not going to put that stipulation, we're going to post?
We're not going to post, because we, because we have no, we can't post until we come up with a job description.
Right.
Right, so we can sort of talk about whether or not that's in the next.
And you're going to talk about it the next week.
Oh, okay.
So.
I think, I think it's still worth.
That, among other things.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to make a decision right now, because I.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
I think we need to ruminate over it.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I'm trying to sort of leave it so we can.
I think we should.
So we can think about it for a little bit.
Okay, next meeting, we'll vote to accept the posting, is that, and, you know, discuss and post.
All right, so I guess at that point is, you know, is it going to be me working on an initial posting? Like, not that it obviously, it doesn't have to be.
Honestly, I think you're going to go over to the Masco guy, you're going to get it, you're going to copy it, and you're going to change Masco to Hamilton Wenham, and you're going to change seven to three K.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's still someone to draft. Someone to draft that.
You're going to draft it because you're going to have the, you said you were going to have the conversation with the chair, so I figured.
Yeah, and I have no problem doing that, I just want to make sure that I have permission to, to do that, to work, to be a basis to work off of.
What I thought you were doing, yes, is that what everybody thought?
Well, we didn't, we didn't vote on that, and I just want to make sure it's clear.
That's what I thought, I thought you said you.
Yep, again, I have no problem doing it, I just want to make sure that we're all clear.
Yep.
All right. Um, so the next thing up is the school budget communication plan, and we'll try and fly through this, I apologize, this did not make it into the Dropbox. Um, because I was working on it today. There's a few I've got here, so this is obviously, as you can tell, based off of last year's, um, it is not the prettiest thing I've ever designed, um, but there's still more time to do that.
I don't know, what would no models have on that graphic design?
The main thing is that, so that, is this what we want the first page to be looking like and saying? Or is there more information we want on there, and then on the back, um, how do those descriptions look? And I have not done it, done an OPEB trust fund.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Right up.
Um, so what would this, is this something we're going to head out at town meeting?
So this would be something that we, uh, we discussed last week, that we'd probably do another mailer like we did last year.
Can you mail eight and a half by 11?
What's that?
Can you mail eight and a half by 11?
Yeah, last year.
Yeah, this is the exact same format, I, I just switched the orientation.
And will we make sure that all the, um, residents get it this time, because I don't think we had it for every resident last?
Yeah, I think what we just spoke about last meeting was, you know, doing that, but then having some extras printed to have available at.
So, well, let's just be clear, right, so we, we worked with the postmaster and we, we instructed the postmaster to deliver it to every home in Hamilton and Wenham. And they told us they were going to do that, and that's what we paid for, and we didn't find out until after the fact that some households were missed. So that's really out of our control, we bring it to the post office, we pay for bulk mailing and they take it from there, just like any other mailing. So the fact that some households didn't receive it is really not something that we can control.
Yeah, but.
So I'm not sure what.
Yeah, the cost estimate though, that you gave us last time was.
So it wasn't a cost estimate?
For about four thousand.
So I gave you the actual costs?
Yeah.
Right.
In that, my letter, my email, my email to you guys.
Oh, that's where I saw it, that's where I saw it.
So those weren't, that wasn't an estimate, those were actual costs.
Um, I, I don't like the purple, I just have to say that, I don't like the purple, I don't know why.
I kind of want to change the color, I kind of want to change the colors anyway, just make it a purple.
I don't want to be the person doing the creative here, but I'm just going to say I don't like the purple.
I want to make it a little bit different from last year anyway, just, because that's what happened, but, um, I just wanted to get something for everyone to see tonight. Go from there, get some editing, um, or some ideas, move on from there, then, so we can get this out, because. Basically, I have to get ideas from you and finish it up to be able to get this to print in.
Is this going to both towns?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, in order to get this to print and delivered, we can't push this to the next meeting.
So I don't, I don't want to take it off topic necessarily, but do we know how one of them is structuring their warrants?
We do, because they did that.
Did they do that? So they split it? I thought it wasn't finished yet.
No, because I was at town meeting and Jackie was sending that to, or not town, I was at the.
Did it finish it?
I was at the town hall for a meeting and Jackie said that she was proofreading the warrant to send it to the printer, so it has to have been done.
Yeah, I have.
I know they were working on it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
So the only, the only reason why I ask the question, and we don't need to debate that now, is, is whether or not we want to make something more specific or highlight it. Vote for the warrant articles, I mean, because you have a little, you have a, you have some small text down here, but do we want to say like, there's more than one warrant article?
Well, this is.
I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know.
That was my.
I don't know how Hamilton is even structuring it.
I don't know how they.
Question, because.
Yeah.
I think they're still working on it, so.
What I had heard, and I don't know if it's.
Ain't sure.
True.
Nah.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I think I do know.
I haven't heard anything, but I'm not, all right?
I think I do know, I think these, I think I do know, I think I do know, I, these two are together in one.
For Wenham.
And then this part is in another.
So there's three?
The part that, you know, giving us the crumbs, the one point, whatever, nine or one point.
Three, five.
Whatever that is, and then all of the other is in an, a warrant article of its own.
So they have.
So they have two overrides, one includes these two things, and one includes the amount over the crumbs that they're giving us.
Three questions.
So this difference between those two things and the crumbs.
There's three questions.
Well, no, no, these two are together in one, this amount.
Right.
Because they decided they can't tell you exactly how to spend the money, but this amount is in one, and then this part. That, you know, whatever it is, that.
The difference between.
The one between the crumbs and this part, so there's like two articles that are.
Right, the difference between what they.
Should we call it crumbs?
But the main operating budget is in, is its own separate budget, or separate art, separate warrant, right?
We probably shouldn't guess, yeah.
Sorry.
I think we need to get accurate information.
Again, again, the point is, the point is, do we want to highlight, vote for the warrant articles somewhere else?
Yeah, make that bigger.
I don't know, all right, that's a suggestion.
Or even just come to town meeting to vote on the articles.
So that's what's down at the bottom right-hand corner.
But that should be.
Prominent.
Yeah, this should be more.
I can change it.
Yeah, this definitely needs to be more prominent.
This is what we're here for.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, people aren't going to.
Warren Harries, that's April.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The out-of-district tuition, should we put in there, this is required by mass law, to say that's like really something out of our control?
Federal.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering if you should highlight that, I don't think you should.
It's something out of our control, and that, and then the school resource officer, we could say that this has widespread community support.
That's a good idea.
And the OPEB trust fund, we can take Jeff's language, the benefit of fund, you know, fully funding our hundred million dollar liability. That's going to come.
So, yeah, which I.
Unless we go single.
I could probably put, throw something together like that in OPEB, I haven't shown this to, um, Jeff or Mike yet either, this is the first time they're seeing it, so I'm not even. One hundred percent sure the numbers are correct, um, I'm pretty comfortable with it, but, um, I'd make sure that everything is copacetic. But, all right, I'm adding that required by the law.
I think within our.
It's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
This, within our confines, under out-of-district, within the confines of our district. I would, I think, so where it's in out-of-district, it's the least, um, on the third line, learning environment within the confines of our district. Being such a small school system, I mean, can't you just say within our schools? Within our district schools, I, I don't like confines, it sounds like they're confined in the schools.
Right, okay, yeah, I mean, so.
I'm trying not to wordsmith it.
Sure to wordsmithing, um, but I, I think it also is important to, um, and I'd actually like to put, which I didn't vote, um. I totally forgot what I was just going to say.
So, so as I think about working backwards from April 6th, town meeting, this needs to be finalized and approved by the committee tonight.
That's what I'm.
Because.
You're running out of runway.
March 27th wouldn't do it.
Right, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say, is like, I need direction and then the ability to say, okay, I'm going to edit this, send it to you guys, make sure everything. You know, the numbers are correct and then go from there, because I, I thought at least I said that the 27th wasn't going to be good enough.
Yeah, we should, yeah, it's got to be done soon, David. So should we, should we set up a subcommittee to do this, because even like, you probably should have a proofreader, because.
Oh, I would.
Right, so if you set up, if we like, say, whatever, three people, those three people could meet at some point and approve it.
So I, I don't like that idea.
Okay.
Um, and only because, you know, at last meeting, we had three people say that they were going to send, or two people said they were going to send emails about, with information on here, and I didn't get those emails. So to actually try and meet would be even harder, more difficult, and.
Well, so who's going to be your proofreader?
How about if you?
So again, you know, I, this literally came off my printer warm as I walked in the door, so I hadn't even, you know, gone through that, like I said. It's going to go through at least Mike and Jeff to make sure the numbers are correct, you know, that are in there, and, you know, to go through that whole process.
How about if you send an email and somebody can individually say if they see stuff, then they get back to you, David?
Oh, you can't do that, that's creating a report.
That's serial.
You know, one thing, I don't know if this was said, but I like to flip this and that, put this down there.
Yeah, no, I'm going to put that up there.
This does not need to stand out like that.
Yeah, no, that just.
Because you don't see.
Yep.
Any of these lines down here, you, I mean, if you're looking at this, you don't look, I mean visually, you don't look at that bottom right-hand corner.
Visually, the, that's the most noticeable thing is the bottom right-hand corner, right, because.
Maybe the rest will.
It, it goes, should we read left to right, top to bottom? So that's where you actually put. Put your logo. Put your logo.
A logo is one thing, a message is different.
It's the last thing you read.
If people get there, though.
Okay, so what's the best way to get David? Edits?
So this is my question. So like, I don't know, like, maybe three hundred people come to the Hamilton town meeting, maybe a couple hundred people come to the Wyndham town meeting. Is it effective to send this to every household? Or would it be effective to put this in the hands of people who are actually at the meeting?
You'd do both.
Okay.
You could, you could do.
I'm just saying.
Could do both, not.
I mean, it's, it's, it's less than two thousand dollars to mail and reproduction costs for forty-five hundred copies.
Okay.
Just to put it in context for everybody.
Can we email it as well? Do we have access to it?
This might drive, this might drive people to the other town meeting.
So that, that was the approach we used last year. So it was multifaceted.
It was so cute, it was like a little puppy, and then I was like.
Wyndham town meeting was packed for the, for the school votes last year. And then it emptied out.
And we lost the form.
Right. So, so as far as we're concerned, it worked.
Yeah, but it was less than three hundred people. Packed was when we used to have this room filled and that room filled, that was the override year, that was like packed.
You know what? I'm off next week from work, so I can sit down with you and edit. Up that.
There you go.
Yeah.
Um.
Thirty minutes, something like that, forty-five minutes, whatever.
All right.
Does it work?
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go, easy.
So, is there any, anything glaring right now that, while?
Availability is spelled wrong, that's why I was like.
Just some typos. Yeah.
And I'm not really good at grammar, so.
I think you wanna target a final product. Um, for, by a week from, a week from Friday.
Oh, easy.
And I, I think this majority, this, um, salaries is a majority, I think that majority needs to be quantified.
Yeah, yeah.
A week from Friday, yeah.
A week from Friday, that gives us.
So what are you thinking?
That gives us a week to send it out.
Yeah, I think the actual number should be there.
Set to whatever it is.
The next Tuesday, mail it.
All right.
So where it says, as it is necessary to place students, or is it, should be required by law?
So I have, I have that note, I, when you said it earlier.
That's just my understanding, I'm just.
Right. We don't, we can't fix, we can't change it.
So after you and Gene have created a final product, I'm happy to meet with you guys real quick and review it.
Yep.
Content. But I've watched the video and it said that you guys own this.
Yep.
So.
That's cause you were here.
Well, I watched the whole video and you guys did volunteer me for some things, but it was only editing and reviewing, which I'm happy to do.
Yeah, no, it's the committee's budget, so we need to defend that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
All right.
And the school resource officer does enjoy wide, spread community support, right?
Yep. I think that's a.
We're not happy with the.
Unquantified statement, but.
Yeah.
It's what, Michelle?
It's unquantified, like, we haven't, I mean, we've had.
People who came and spoke at our meetings have widely supported it.
But we have had ten people here and there are.
It's open to everybody.
Eight thousand people in the, so you know what I mean, I mean, I'm not saying.
I think it's an important point.
Unquantified.
If we're trying to sell it.
Right.
We want people to know that it's important and that people support it.
Jeff's language for the OPEP trust fund, your argument is tight, you have to say, this has got to say.
Somebody was gonna draft something and I'm happy to review it. So I, I think that's what the charge was, right? I don't remember who was supposed to write it.
No, no, but I'm saying your language that you used in all the presentations too.
Yeah, this four or five slides that I prepared, just pull some information from that and I'll review it and make sure it's right.
Is, and this is, is this, is that the name of that agreement, Hamilton's Community Preservation Agreement?
So I have to look that up. I think it's that, uh, HCA, right?
We.
It's a host, host community agreement.
Host community agreement, yeah.
Yeah.
With Green Meadows Farms.
It's also Hamilton. You were close.
Post-community agreement.
Green, yeah, green medals, right. Green Meadows, I think I got that right.
Got that right, it's the host community.
All right.
So are we authorizing Gene and David to create this, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yeah. Go for it. I move. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee, um, oh my gosh, I'm.
Direct.
Direct, thank you. I'm like, whatever I say. David and Gene to finish the communication plan flyer. And, um, through, um, making sure everything's accurate and then get it out.
Second.
All those in favor?
I know.
So that, so that makes you a public body, so you have to post, because we've authorized you to be a multi-member group. Just be careful with that.
Oh, that's good.
You can post at the Black Cow Bar.
You can post anywhere that's open to the public.
All right, uh, personnel contract, we need a vote on this. We have the whole red line contract in here, and it's been in here, it's been in our dropout for a couple weeks now.
Do we want questions now, or do we want me to make a motion?
So, uh, why don't I make a motion?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee vote to approve the office personnel contract as an exhibit C.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
So I have this, well, I have a couple things. I have the same question about why we're following a different process for this contract than for the teachers and not meeting an executive session to kinda ask these questions first. Cause now we're like negotiating out and open. But my next question is the only question I would ask in executive session, which is, um, so some people are being designated as, um, full-year employees. And some people are being designated as school year employees. Um, so who, is anybody moving from one category to another?
No, no.
Okay, so.
It was just a point of clarification that was, wasn't clear in the prior draft.
So my other, then question is like, goes back to kind of what I was asking the last time, is, so, school secretaries are gonna be full-year employees. Is that right?
They always have that.
Okay, that's what I thought. So then they usually take off the month of.
So head secretary, so.
July. Right.
Other secretaries.
Right, yeah, like the guidance office or something like that. So are these people going to be working more days for the same, well, for the slightly more pay that they're getting in the COLA? Or are they gonna still be working the same number of days they always have? Cause usually the school secretary's not here in the month of July.
Yeah, so the contract for, so it really narrows down to the three elementary principal secretaries. Who have historically been classified as twelve-month employees. But at some point along the way, maybe about a decade ago, somebody told them that they were eleven-month employees. So the district was in breach of contract. Because that was never memorialized in a contract. Right? So during our negotiations, we, we brought, we brought that up and it needed to be, it needed to be rectified. So those people are twelve-month employees and should be working twelve months. They can take their vacation time and take the month of July off if they so choose. But. The proposed contract and what we're proposing to operationalize for next year is in the spirit of the prior contract and the proposed contract.
But not the past practice for the last.
Not past practice, but the contract.
So some people will be working more days for relatively the same pay?
No.
Okay, because?
Because they were only being paid for eleven months when the contract called for twelve months. So the, a prior superintendent breached the contract.
Okay, so the, so if someone this year was making, just for lack of a better word, was making forty thousand dollars.
Might make forty-two thousand dollars.
They might make forty-two thousand, but they're not getting off the month of July unless they use the vacation time. And the vacation time is the same amount of days that they had before.
The same, same amount of days that were provided in the contract.
Right.
Which is tiered, right, by the number.
Right, by the number of years that they've been here.
Right, right. So it, this is a, this is reconciling the contract with operations.
Right.
Right.
What we were doing before was wrong.
Breach of the contract.
Yes. What a prior superintendent did in not bargaining, memorializing the language in the contract was wrong.
Right.
And we're fixing that, which is the appropriate thing to do.
And so the union authorized this already?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
They voted to approve it.
Okay.
We had a very kind of robust conversation around it. It's an issue Mike and I brought up because we felt, you know, having read the contract, we felt that it was, it, we can't have our cake and eat it too, right? So the contract, what we do and what the contract says has to be an exact match, and that's what we have here.
Right. Okay, yeah, so that was kind of my question, is, are we somehow increasing their salary to make up for that? Are they getting more vacation times to make up for the fact that they, so basically, it's only the increase in the COLA? Even though they are now a twelve-month employee in this frame.
They're getting paid for twelve months, not eleven.
Twelve months, not eleven, they were only gonna pay for eleven months as well.
Okay, so they're actually getting more money.
They, they're getting more money that they're entitled to and have always been entitled to.
Yeah.
Cause the position was a twelve-month position.
Right, right.
But they were all being paid for.
Okay, so then.
And being told to stay home for a month.
So how.
Prior superintendent told them to stay home for a month?
Okay.
And didn't bargain that.
Yep.
That's inappropriate.
So how much do we anticipate the actual cost of the salaries increase to be? What percent?
The salary piece is around ten thousand.
Okay.
And the COLA piece is, uh, seven thousand dollars for every one percent increase in COLA. So, uh, if the, the contract is for two and a half percent, so seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
So what's the ten thousand?
That's, that's the value of requiring those three secretaries to work.
That's an extra month.
Okay.
It's about three thousand per.
Right, right, right.
So theoretically, this entire contract is worth roughly sixty?
Yeah, so, yes.
I mean, I, you know, it's a very.
So fifty-three plus ten.
Right.
Right.
Right. Very important people, very small group of people, though.
Right, so, absolutely.
And so this includes like the athletic director, secretary?
Everybody in the personnel unit, yeah.
There was only three people, though, that were in that, you don't work twelve months, you only work eleven, everybody else was.
Well, or, yeah, or they're, or they're the not.
Or they're a school year, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So the prior contract talked about.
Yep.
School year or ten month, they were using these interchangeable words, which I didn't like.
Right, so we've cleaned that up.
They were also talking about, and then they, they had different terms for full-time people, or t, full-time or twelve months.
Right.
Well, let's clarify that. So we have school year, which is, we've included a definition.
Four, yep.
Yep, mirrors the teachers, right? Or it's a full-time position, which is a full-time position. We've eliminated all that other confusing language. And we've also eliminated any issue that is in conflict with the, with the, with the agreement, which is those three people.
Okay.
So this contract fixes that, which was a must-do.
Right.
Okay. Was the vote of the union unanimous, do you know?
No.
Does it require a two-thirds vote to?
It was unanimous, yeah.
Close it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Is my understanding.
Yeah, I never got to ask John.
Yeah, I didn't see them.
I understand.
Right, I just asked.
More questions? All those in favor? I have unanimous, excellent. All right, uh, warrant legal notice for elections, exhibit D. We're at the end, guys.
So there were two of these in the Dropbox, they looked identical, were they identical?
Uh.
I mean, basically, the information is the same, right?
The information in the paragraph is the same, there was some changes down at the bottom, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you, all right.
That one we have to, yeah, I have to fix the one, I fixed that on the one you guys have to sign, but there was, there was something else at the bottom.
Thank you, okay.
That was changed.
Okay.
All right, so.
So this is the warrant to advertise the school committee election.
That we're signing is, does it say two thousand nineteen, or is it still two thousand eighteen?
I actually amended it on this with an initial on there, say twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanna make sure if we're signing it, it says two thousand nineteen.
The one you're gonna sign has my initials and a two thousand nineteen on it, cause.
Do we just sign it, or do we actually need to make a motion?
Jeff just picked it up. Um, yeah, you should move that you're gonna publish this warrant.
All right.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee, um, approve the warrant for election of the members of the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District Committee. Um, pursuant to the, um, regional school district agreement.
Second.
All those in favor? Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Um, blah, 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 blah.
It says me donation.
Yep.
Yeah, you're the first.
Yep.
Okay. Let me see if I can find them real fast.
Where's it back?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Friends of Winthrop Listed Items. Do you want me to read each one?
You could just say exhibit E two.
That's Winthrop. Yeah, cause it's a lot of stuff, huh?
Yeah.
Buiker's got a lot of stuff, Winthrop's got.
Or four portable lap desks, laptop stand writing tables, two manipulative cabinets, two rolls of craft paper, laminator film, iPad document camera stand.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sorry, I was a little. I just wanna know where they got the typewriter to type this, that's what I wanna know. Or did they find that?
I don't know.
They flipped it.
Now, there's also one for Buiker.
Buiker.
What, yeah, I was about, I was waiting for people to stop talking. I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Friends of Buiker in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred, wait.
Oh.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah, that's not right.
Eight-nine, oh.
That's wrong.
How many numbers there?
Too many numbers.
Too many numbers, um.
Eight-nine-three-two.
Eight-nine thirty-two.
What?
Eight-nine-three-two.
In the total of eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
All those in favor? So as always, thank you very much to our Friends groups. Uh, we couldn't be the outstanding district that thinks we are without your help. Topics for next meeting.
Yes, um, I would like to make sure that we have the update on SOI, cause I believe they're due in April, correct? For the two SOIs, if we just get an update or.
Yeah, I think we're gonna vote on that, right?
Uh, the plan was to vote on those on April tenth, cause they're due the twelfth.
And then also, I would, um, like to ask policy working group, look at a policy, um, because it was noted at a sports meeting last night that there's an issue with buses, um, saying that there's a national shortage of bus drivers, spring schedules, and and so they were talking that possibly, you know, having parents be able to, like carpool and bring some kids with, if they're having issue with buses, so if we could possibly look at, because there were coaches talking about trying to get this approval, so I'd like to see if we can possibly look at policy number H eight zero two-two, which is student transportation in private vehicles with this notice on, you know, coming from the sports meeting.
We have to post that meeting tomorrow, Mike.
Right.
So if we.
Thank you for remembering that now.
So if we can, if you guys can talk about it, maybe look at it, because I know there was a lot of concern about busing.
That can go right to policy, right? You guys are meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Meeting on the twenty-fifth, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying for policy, but I want that so we can talk about it, because if we could possibly, you know, if there's gonna be a change at the next meeting, because right now there's some issues with busing.
But Mike, I don't know what Dorothy's planning, planning to talk about.
I, I mean.
Cause she said she was gonna send us stuff in advance of the meeting, and we've got nothing.
I haven't seen anything from Dorothy, I mean, I think the agenda is Dorothy Presser.
We had a run.
And, uh.
Do you wanna put this on that?
Policy work, and then we can put
Yeah, I was in at the meeting last night.
The private transportation policy on there too, to look at.
Okay, all right. And that was H eight oh two-two.
David?
Again, I don't, I don't know what was said.
Oh, so.
Yeah.
What I was gonna say is there could be policies, but I don't know, because we're meeting with Dorothy on Monday, um, and I don't know what she's gonna recommend. She said she was gonna send us stuff in advance, but we don't have anything, so I'll email her tonight.
No, 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 Dorothy Presser's coming to.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, I, I was asking, um, if it's an immediate problem that we're actually noticing, or if it's a potential problem that we're trying to solve.
Busing has been a problem all year.
That, that was discussed at the sports meeting last night quite a bit, like that meets were being scheduled later because there weren't enough bus drivers to drive.
And it says it right there on this sheet I brought too, talking about shortage.
If, if you wanna have that discussion, you really should invite Craig.
Yeah.
Right, cause so my office oversees and handles transportation. However, the AD is very specifically involved in the transportation
Yeah.
regarding athletics, so.
So what we could do is ask Craig if he could come, and if he can't come, then we would do another. I guess we should ask Craig, is it an immediate need?
Everybody's having issues.
That's what he, they said it was K-Ban, nationwide.
They said it was all K-Ban, all of.
Everybody.
They said nationwide, yeah.
Not just every, not just K-Ban, everybody.
Yeah, everybody, yeah, so, um, I know they were talking about now a half hour later
Hey, David.
that sports has to start because of this problem with busing and.
Yeah, so we should, we should have him come and.
Form a modest bus drive.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to bring it up, because coaches were saying, okay, let's do this. I said, no, you need to go through the school committee, cause there's a policy on this, so, you know, they didn't realize some of this. So I just wanna bring that up. The other thing is, um, just make sure we can, um, the next meeting, talk about, um, capital.
Yep, it's on there. It's on there.
We also have, uh, Rockland Trust is coming to do the OPEP trust fund presentation. You're gonna review the superintendent search posting, um, capital planning calendarization. Uh, we're also planning on having the memorandum of understanding and the intermunicipal agreement around the school resource officer for that meeting as well. Uh, and then I put athletic transportation as another one, so another short night.
Okay, so you're gonna have Craig come to.
But.
So, so.
My last night is chair, I'll push this right through.
So Dr. Harvey.
A little more after that.
So you're gonna have that discussion with the full school committee versus discussing it, a policy?
I think if you're gonna change a policy.
Because we wanna decide first if we need to discuss the policy. I don't care, I'm just asking.
So, what is the committee, if you're gonna change a policy, the process would be to go through the, right, the policy working group first?
Yeah, so should we have
Have him go there?
him come there versus coming here and making that meeting longer?
Cause we need information, exactly. I don't know what the issue is, I don't know what the severity of it is.
Well, I'm not sure Craig would have a lot of input into the policy.
But he, but he might have data about, is this truly a problem that needs to be solved?
It's an issue.
It's a huge issue.
It's an issue. But I also have a huge issue with letting other people drive our kids.
There's some liability there.
I wanna have this kind of really out there. Because I am not supportive of that. There is a lot of liability there, yeah.
Well, and the, yeah.
I'm not okay with that.
Right.
So I, I think one thing we might wanna do is reach out, um, whether it's a little widespread, probably ask the MAC if, you know, how other people are handling.
You can do that, but that not, that probably won't change my opinion.
I'm not saying it would, but at the same time, you know, I, I, you're not the only one who would think about the liability issues and see if there's a.
Well, cause those people are almost, they're acting as if they're like contract employees, cause they're providing a service to the district that the district can't.
Hey, let's take it up at the policy committee.
I saw that somewhere, somebody posted like, I can rent a bus for this amount, or I can rent a bus for, oh, it was, uh,
Keep chipping.
somebody here, yeah, or I can rent a limo to take the, it's almost the same price, why don't I just do that?
It's actually cheaper to get.
Can't do that because.
Stretch Hummer.
Yeah.
Then a school bus for two days.
Really?
Yeah.
Imagine if our team's rolled up in a stretch Hummer.
It was a robotics team, yeah, they were looking to roll it up in a stretch Hummer.
That is amazing.
All right.
Yeah.
So we're gonna move to adjourn, if that is wrong.
The Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee adjourn at ten fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
See you tomorrow night.
Michelle, she wants to pay attention.
Michelle, raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Oh, no, I'm staying.